We have the audio working. We have Zoom working without a video to Frank to be able and Dan to be able to see in here. I'm starting a backup audio. And I am going to press the record button on the Zoom.
This meeting is being recorded.
And I will try the video one more time. It's still not working, so we're going to go whenever, whenever you're ready, Mayor.
Hey, I'll call the work session for the Oregon City Commissioner order for Tuesday, June 9th. Did we call or roll any things?
Yes, so I will go ahead and do that.
Call or roll.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Present.
Commissioner Rachel Lausch Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
And Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here. Who's got the first item?
Um, that would be future agenda items. Mr. Cuckle.
Anybody?
So included in the packet, we have the, on the running list of work session items, as well as what we are anticipating to bring to the commission in their work session next month. So once again, if there is any future agenda items that the commission would wish to discuss or questions about anything that's on this list, please let me know.
Okay, so after that, who's got the first item?
I do as well, Mayor. So thank you, Commissioners. So tonight, we're presenting a discussion topic. It concerns temporary use of the right of way in a portion of private parking lots for existing restaurant businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic. So really, tonight, we're just introducing this subject. We're not going to get into the details. And what I'm looking for tonight is if this is something that the commission is interested in us as staff continuing to work on to bring back essentially a temporary policy that would allow for restaurants to expand into the parking spaces along a street in the public right of way to allow for additional space for dining. This would also include an option of if you have a restaurant and you have a private parking lot, the ability to use a portion of that private parking lot for outdoor seating as well. So with the sector guidance that has been provided by the states for restaurants, it's drastically limited the occupancy of those buildings and their ability to serve food. So to meet social distancing requirements, this is a concept that you're, that we're starting to see throughout the region and throughout the country that utilizes on-street parking stalls or private parking lots to allow that expansion of additional tables to help create additional revenue for these restaurants during this event. So we're not going to dive into the details tonight. It was really introducing the concept because what we will end up doing, and we've been working on this a little bit, but we would really dive into, you know, is essentially spinning up a brand-new program. And we would run it as a pilot project where we would introduce it potentially at your July 1st commission meeting. It would be a policy with standards and application criteria that an applicant would be able to submit. We would review that meets the standards, they would be allowed to do this. We would then revisit it after the summer season and have a look at how it went, kind of see, you know, how did this work? Were there any issues? Did it work well? And then either make a decision at that point whether to continue it for another year essentially. And then potentially at that six-month check-in, after the season check-in the first time, you know, is to have a discussion, is this something that we want to consider actually codifying? Or is this more of a temporary program to just get us through the COVID-19 limitations that we see on businesses, specifically restaurants?
Katie, once again, can you put the other camera up so I can see the dials?
Yes, I would normally. Unfortunately, our Zoom is having difficulties in allowing me to do that. I do see that Rocky, Commissioner Rocky Smith would like to speak.
Commissioner Smith.
So I, I think this is a great idea. It's one I think we've talked about in the past a little bit in the community, but this seems to be a good try, a good time to try it out. I guess the only concern would be, and definitely when we talk about this at greater length, the, the main question the public's going to have is the elimination of parking, what additional parking is being added? Now, that doesn't necessarily mean we are adding additional parking, but it does mean that we need to hear an update and a pretty clear report of where we're at with the shared parking program and be able to really communicate that to the public. I guess one of the comments would be, the shared parking program, I think, is just in its start right now, which is good because it could align with this. But the shared parking program is used mainly nights and weekends, which would kind of help with the, the restaurant bar crowd. However, the concern would be the shop owners who are only there during the day who are losing those parking spaces on the street and aren't really adding any extras to help them out. So I think we have to kind of strategize how to make sure we're not, you know, we want to help the restaurant bar business, but we also don't want to, at the same time, hurt our existing shop owners that are also struggling at the moment. And then the other question would be, there's probably not as much criteria going into this as a pilot program, but my thought would be, what do these things look like? And is there some expectation of what they look like? So that we don't have just giant eyesores on the side of the street? And, and, you know, is there an expectation to the way these parklets look? And so I think that's something that if we can get more information about how to deal with that.
And I think, because we've had that discussion as well, obviously, you've got an access, a safety issue, and then the aesthetic component of that is really important. And trying to balance, you know, if it's truly just a pilot program, it's harder to invest more if it's not going to be there longer term.
Right. But if it's a pilot program that becomes a permanent, how do you go back and?
Fix it.
Right.
We have to have it upfront now, I think, rather than going back and trying to retrofit it.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, I think they're two very different programs, even though they impact one another. One is we're talking about city-controlled streets and parking, and one, we're talking about private property usage.
Right.
And I also feel, I'm a little concerned about, when we start, what about the safety factor? I mean, we've talked so many times in transportation studies about the ability to protect pedestrians on. Now, we're talking about putting pedestrians immediately adjacent to moving traffic. So are we talking about obstacles that can stop a 2,500-pound car at 25 miles per hour? I don't think we are. So as Commissioner Smith touched upon it already, we really, to my knowledge, we haven't made much progress on the shared parking with parking lots. And I'm not, and I also, I'm pleased that he touched upon the fact that this is a focus upon restaurants. What about the non-restaurant businesses and the lost parking they might experience because it's now dedicated to restaurant-type service? And there is also a statement, and these two programs get intermixed because of the way they are written up and presented. But they talked about the temporary and up to October 31st. And I think there needs to be an addition to that statement when the time comes. And that statement would be, or until such times as state restrictions are lifted in the event that occurs before October 31st. And then I'm not sure who bears the cost and what the criteria is going to be. And there was, at one point earlier in our meetings, there was discussions on fees. I think there's a lot more detail in there, but I'll silence myself for the moment, let others speak, and maybe we can speak about more details later. There's details such as planters and inside enticements. And that may be the other item on the thing tonight. We'll talk about enticements versus sidewalk sales and such. But for now, I'll silence myself and let others speak.
Commissioner Lausch Smith, do you have anything?
So I, I think you have a list of things. So my understanding is, just to make sure I'm clear, you're going to come back in July. That addresses all of these things that we just brought up, right?
I think, yeah, because I think, you know, we've identified, you know, some basic things that, but we, one, we wanted to see if you were even, if the commission was even interested in this. And if it was, then, you know, what are some of the concerns? So that we make sure that, you know, if there are things that we missed, you know, that we can try to address those when we bring this to you.
Right. So one data point I'd be interested in, I'm looking at Mr. Lewis. I know there have been some communities that do this successfully on their main streets. I'm interested in traffic counts for those main streets where and how do those traffic counts compare to ours? Just so that I have some comparison of knowing. It would help me judge the safety factor if we, for example, if we have 10 times more cars going down Main Street to get across the bridge, I would be, you know, not all cities have a bridge and a primary crossing that they need to take to go across the river. So I'm concerned about that and along with the others. But just to give you a data point, I'd be interested in that when you bring that back to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, yes, thank you. I do have some concerns and some suggestions. So I would say generally, I support the idea of parklets. I think where it is most applicable would be in our downtown and possibly in the 7th Street corridor area. I don't actually see these occurring on Malala Avenue or Beaver Creek Road. They don't lend themselves to this kind of what I would call slower traffic or pedestrian-oriented facility, although they have, these other areas would have the option of doing it in a parking lot, which I think they have ample space to do that. I noticed Mike's Drive-In owns the lot next door to them, and they unfortunately or fortunately put gravel down and they put their picnic benches out there. And the tables are all apart from each other. So a couple of things that I think we need to talk about are addressing Commissioner Smith's concern. I think that the Downtown Association is looking at a template for the parklet for downtown, and I would definitely support that. I believe there needs to be some consistency because to me, as well as what Commissioner Smith said, appearance is important, particularly downtown where we have, we are a main street, we're, we are at the highest level of Main Street. And let me just say, we cannot have it look tacky. And tacky is in the eye of the beholder, so I'm just using my definition of tacky. Somebody else's idea might not be tacky. I think that we need to look at specific streets. They cannot be everywhere. They're cannot, I don't think we should have one on every single block because, again, I have a concern about the balance of the parklet with the parking. The one thing I would like to see added, if we can, it has to meet all ADA requirements. And I mean, up to taking somebody in a wheelchair through there to make sure it works. I'm a little concerned right now that we have some major ADA impediments downtown. And although I myself am not in a wheelchair, I know others who are. And I look at it from the standpoint, if I can't get through the tables, then how can somebody in a wheelchair get through them? And I consider myself to be a little bit agile. I think we ought to look at a timeframe that summer months, to me, would be appropriate. I don't see people out there in parklets in the middle of the winter because it would be horribly cold and nasty. And then I have a question about number six. So I'm not sure that I can support an unlimited number of tents, umbrellas, and other shade structures allowed in the expanded dining area because I think that, again, starts getting to be cluttered. And it would depend on the size of umbrella that the person has, the business has, as opposed to, you know, are they all crammed on each other? I mean, again, it has, gets back to appearance. I don't want to see it just completely cluttered. I also have a question about the number of temporary signs. I'm going to take a deep breath as I say this. I think we have plenty of A-frame signs downtown, and I would not like to see more proliferating. It causes an impediment to the pedestrian. It causes an impediment to somebody in a wheelchair. I understand that people want to make people aware where they are, but sometimes too much signage is too much signage, and they're not reading it anyway. But I know signage is going to be required for letting people know that, you know, you have to have a mask on or you need, you need, you know, you get your temperature taken or whatever the requirements are under COVID. To me, that is appropriate, but I think we need to define what we mean by temporary signage because otherwise, to me, that just sounds like a free-for-all. I agree with the minimum parking standards, as well as any other applicable land use standards. You say they're suspended, but I think we kind of need to look at design review as part of this, even if we're not applying it directly, but we need to look at it. It gets back to that appearance thing. And if we're going to do this, I really want it to look good. I really do. I think it'll be a benefit to us. I did have a couple of phone calls this morning with regard to, say, my issue Commissioner Smith brought up, removal of parking. And I did explain that, you know, we don't all have to park right in front of the place that we're going to, and sometimes we do need to walk a little bit. But I am sympathetic to that. I understand that. We, I think the city's been very generous in its regard to parking right now in the circumstances. We're not, you know, requiring metering, but, you know, that will probably come back. So we have to be, have people be prepared for that. I'm not sure what you mean by number 12 approval of building departments. So if it's something that they've built, it's a structure, we want to have a building permit. And then I'm assuming we're talking about Clackamas County Fire District Number One looking to make sure that it's, you know, they're not using, you know, heaters with flammable materials. And then again, you know, what if people want to put those heater things out there? If you use that AstroTurf on this, you know, is, I just want to make sure it's safe. So I think that having no landscaping removed is appropriate. No installation of gravel, sand, or other surface materials, yes, that's, that's great. The removed and designed for easy removal is totally appropriate because I don't see these as being permanent. I see them being temporary. We may make it permanent, but that doesn't mean they're permanently all the time. And they need to be able to be deconstructed. And a couple of the plans that I've seen from Doka are, they can be disassembled kind of like Lego blocks. So that's my apprehensive look at this. And I know, again, this comment might not be popular, but I think some fee that's minimal would be appropriate. That way, people have skin in the game. There is going to be some cost for the city to be reviewing this. And obviously, we're not going to completely cover our costs, but, you know, maybe it's something like $25. I don't know. I'm just talking about something minimal that, that is required. And then I think there needs to be some sort of provision that if you are not following these standards that we have, that you don't get to have your stuff there.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Once again, I'll differentiate between the two because I'm absolutely curious how it is that the city is going to insert themselves into the use of private property. And I'll just leave that statement stand alone. The other, there's going to be costs associated with it. I mean, to me, the devil is in the details. I know tonight, we're just inviting the discussion. But, you know, what form does this take when we're going to have a curb that transitions to these, these seating areas? And who gets to use what? And if your store has 15 for the frontage, what's yours? And what's, is it, is it commonality or is it to your store? And what are the criteria for building this? So much of what Commissioner Denise McGriff said, and I agree with, I, I'll just say simply, the devil is in the details. And I think there'll be an enforcement piece to it. And like the other issue that's going to come up tonight, I really, I find it laughable that those that are down there doing traffic or meter enforcement could not also undertake this considering they're right in the same area at the same time. Thanks.
So, you know, I certainly agree that we should look at this. I'd like to hear what, you know, staff comes back with. I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. I'm absolutely opposed to the city inserting itself into private property rights, you know, for those businesses that have space outside that is their own space. I really look at this as more a temporary thing for this COVID time only. I cannot see how that could actually work long-term in downtown Oregon City, given the parking situations we've had there since virtually the beginning of time. And it's difficult to judge, well, okay, we have three restaurants on one block, but only one gets to have outdoor seating. Who, who, who makes that decision? And so all that scares me. I, I think, let's see what staff brings back to us. And we can look at it a little bit more later there. But I do have a thing about, you know, saying what is attractive or what isn't tacky because that becomes extremely subjective. And I think if we're going to do this, we need to have some basic rules in place. You know, these are the kinds of things you can't have, these kinds of things you can't have. But more importantly, I have a real question about safety on Main Street. You know, that's, it's not a state highway. It's certainly an entry point to a state highway. And it gets a lot of traffic, especially on Friday and Saturday nights. And I question what, how we can do that safely? So that's something I want staff to look at pretty hard. Does anybody have anything else on this subject before we move on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the speed limit downtown is somewhere between 20 and 25 miles an hour. And it could allow for this to occur. The devil is in the details on people driving that particular speed limit. And I just want to be clear, I was not talking about private lots. I was talking about public right of way only in my comments.
Okay, and just to come back on that, I get where you're coming from about speeding traffic. But let's say it's 8:30 at night, a guy's had three or four drinks, gets up from the table and stumbles into the traffic lane. You know, it's not really his fault. It's not really the driver's fault, but we still got somebody either dead or injured. I guess with that, we can move on to the next subject. Mr. Cuckle?
All right, thank you. And for this, I'll, John, or, sorry, we're going to grab Josh real quick to come in and make this presentation.
Thank you for sending out the comment on I&amp;I.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I think many of you have met Josh Wheeler, or all of you have met Josh Wheeler. So I'm just going to turn this topic over to him. There's a slight difference. We recognize the confusion between parklets and the sidewalk topic. Sidewalk topic's been around for a while. If you remember, there was, we'd been implementing the code through a unwritten policy or a written policy, but not unapproved policy through the city commission. Heard some concerns about that from the chamber. And so it's kind of been sitting back burner for us. Josh has been ready to bring it forward for several months now. But we've had a busy work session agenda. So with that, Josh, you want to carry forward?
Sure. Thank you, John. Perfect. So just a small introduction, I'm going to go over the history of this to bring everyone up to speed. I'm going to talk about some proposed code changes, some proposed policy, talk about some fee questions, and then end it there. It's a fairly short presentation. So back last year, we had implemented a pilot project program on a basis of people, can't think of the word all of a sudden, people joining the program on their own voluntarily without us coming after them or regulating them in that, to see what kind of participation we got. And we only got five or six people to participate that year. And they paid $167. They got a permit to put seating in the right of way in the sidewalk, which was downtown, as well as one on 7th Street. And, and at that point, we ended the program because summer was over. The chamber issued a letter to the commission saying, hey, we'd like to talk about this. So then on December 10th, we talked about it in a work session, and I received some direction from the commission that they wanted a written policy and some considerations for changes in some of the code. Since that time, I've prepared that. And I also had a meeting with Vicky Yates of Singer Hill that was requested by her on February 20th of this year. And so now we're here to talk about it further. So currently, in the current city code 12.04, we talk about obstructions, which can be anything from a wall to a dump, temporary dumpster, to sidewalk seating. And it also talks about sidewalk sales. What we're suggesting is that we should look at the code and redefine temporary obstructions, which I'll get into, and then talk about long-term temporary obstructions, such as seating. We're also suggesting that we add sidewalk sales as a special event permit. That way, people can do that on a whatever regular basis they'd like to do that, but not have it all the time. And then make that one of the renewable permits, just like the sidewalk seating. More specifically, we're suggesting that the obstructions right now, to approve them, permanent obstructions go through the city commission. So you've seen those many times, quite often in the Kanema area for a retaining wall. Those are permanent revocable permits that allow someone to build the things they need to build. We also have temporary permits for obstructions which are done at a staff level. And those typically are things, last year, it was some sidewalk seating, but quite often, we get someone wanting to use a parking space for the day that's normally a two-hour parking space for construction reasons usually. Sometimes it's a dumpsters because someone's doing some demo in their house. That's the type of things we permit through there. Short term is typically zero to 60 days. That's typically what it is. We would like to propose that we come up with a long-term temporary that is 61 to 365 days, which would be things like sidewalk seating. The obstruction types that we think fall under that would be seating and planters. Some planters are really completely out of the way, and some of them actually cause some obstructions. And just as a general note, A-frames, which you see in the right of way a lot, they're not permitted through this code. They're permitted through a separate sign code, which is administered by the planning department. So we are not speaking about A-frames at all at this time. Sidewalk sales, that was something that the commission asked about back in December. Currently, the code says no sidewalk sales anywhere. But if you do choose to place them anywhere, then it has to be designated by the city commission. So the city commission could say, we want them on 7th Street, or we want them on Malala Avenue, or we want them on Main Street, wherever. But it has to be designated by the city commission. What we're suggesting is to adjust that a little bit and say that whatever areas the commission designates, that we provide, that we require a renewable permit that is allowed up to 365 days, and they could do that at any time. We also give them the option of any area with a special event permit, which would be for the duration of seven days and four times a year. But again, currently, there are no areas that are allowed anywhere in the city. So that's just a proposal we came up with trying to address that question that came from the commission. Fees was a question that was brought up back in December as well, as well as by the commission letter, or, sorry, chamber letter. The current schedule, fee schedule, says it's $167 per location for renewable permits. It's $557 per location for permanent obstructions, things like the wall that I gave the example of earlier. It's $56 per location for a temporary short term, such as the parking or the dumpsters. And just as a note, all fees are increased annually per the Consumer Price Index. So they go up by approximately 2%, 3% every year, depending on what the CPI is. Fees elsewhere, you'll see on the list there, West Lynn and Tigerd, we found at $100. Happy Valley, $150, although only up to 90 days. Milwaukee's at 50, Gresham's at 123. Hillsborough has a 50-one time, but then a 25 renewal. But these fees are not necessarily for seating only. So they go for a lot of different things. So we're not fully comparing apples to apples. We're in a similar realm of subject, but not completely apples to apples. And that information was found by reviewing their codes, but we also followed up and called their planning and engineering departments to verify we understood their code correctly, to be able to do the comparison that we were doing. So that's how we provide this information. Gladstone, Wilsonville, Tualatin, Beaverton, the other major cities in the area, the metro region, don't have any fees because they don't have any public sidewalk seating. Lake Oswego did have a fee, but they repealed it back in March of 2018.
What was it?
The question is, what was that fee? And if I recall, I believe it was $100, but I would have to verify that. I don't know that for sure. I'm going by memory of about six months ago.
So the fees that you're proposing, are they for seating only, or are they?
So the fees that you're proposing, are they for seating only, or are they for any type of temporary obstruction?
So uh currently, the current fees that we have on our fee schedule is um for a permanent obstruction is the five fifty-seven. A temporary obstruction, such like a dumpster, is fifty-six. This uh renewable permit, which we required last year, was one sixty-seven. That was what um uh we landed on and was approved. And that is the general cost it is um to do a permit intake uh at the city. So if someone wants to get a driveway, a sidewalk, it's one sixty-seven to intake that and review it. And then it's another one sixty-seven to inspect it. So we dropped the one, the inspection part and just said, one sixty-seven seems like a reasonable amount. Um, based on the comparisons, is that? I think that's a question for the commission to decide. Uh, so where are we at? These code amendments um that we're looking at, they're a combination of numerous uh code amendments, which I'll go into a little more detail in the next presentation. Um, but we would like to bring those in as a package, um unless the commission wants them to be uh brought separately. Um, ultimately, we would come out with the details and and go through it line by line, however the desire is. Uh, we have a resolution to adopt that policy, so it becomes an official policy and not just a staff policy. And then if there's any changes, changes to the fee schedule, we would then go ahead and bring a new fee schedule to you as well. A little word about where we are right now in June of two thousand and twenty and the COVID situation. Um, I know it was discussed in the item previous to this uh about the uh sidewalk and the parklets and that sort of thing. Um, parklets aside, people are already using the sidewalk um in various areas of the city um that have um, they don't have any private sidewalk, they only have public sidewalk. My recommendation, our recommendation from Public Works, is that we waive that renewable sidewalk permit fee this year and not go seek that. Um, we would actually send letters out to everyone, letting them know that we're doing that, if it's the desire of the commission to do that. And then we also recommend um uh waiving the fee. So not waiving the code that allows for the temporary uh chairs and tables to be there, and also waiving the fee for the cost of it being there. That's just a recommendation. You may think otherwise, and we're open to hear that. Uh, so what would we like to hear uh right now? We're um, we'd like to know, do you like where we're headed with this? Should we continue with the legislative process? Uh, we'd like to know, what do you think of the general concepts of having this uh short-term uh obstruction as well as a long-term, short-term obstruction? And then what do you think about the fee schedule? Um, and also sidewalk sales, your general thoughts on that? And then that'll help us uh hone in on our code that we bring back through the legislative process. And that's what I've got for you tonight.
Thanks, sir. Um, who wants to go first?
Um, I will, if I may.
Mr. Urban Regret.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would just like to add to uh what I've already added on the previous item. I kind of wish this one had been first and the other one second, but that's okay. Uh, I don't have any concerns. I I feel that for the most part, the sidewalk obstruction's particularly related to seating has been generally good. Um, there's always a couple of places. So I I think it behooves us, again, I don't want to be big brother, but I think in terms of any of these obstructions, I would like to see some, some sort of posting. If it's a business downtown, that they have something that says, yes, I have a permit. It's posted somewhere so it can be seen. Uh, doesn't have to be, you know, giant, but whatever we're gonna give them that, and particularly um dumpsters. I know that I called you once, uh, I came around a corner uh in in the city, and there was a porta potty sitting right in front of a fire hydrant. Now, I don't think they had a permit for that, and that caused me some alarm because it was also a site obstruction on the street right of way. And, you know, why would you put, I mean, it's kind of ironic that they put the porta potty in front of the fire hydrant. But um, that aside, I was concerned that it was there. And when I pulled out from that particular street, you couldn't see anything because the porta potty was there. So I was like, why was, why is this here? Um, I think it's, I would support us waiving the fees for the remainder of the year, subject to compliance with all the other requirements. And again, it goes back to my concern about the ADA access because just because the tables are out there, that does not give someone the right to block access. And I think it's imperative, we've been very fortunate, we have not been sued. But there's a couple of situations downtown that I think are ripe for that. And I know there are ADA advocates running around Portland, I don't want them to come here. Uh, I think we should, you know, if somebody's not doing what they're supposed to do, I think we should have as an obligation to say, hey, by the way, did you know your table here is not, there's not enough room here, and maybe you can't have it here, but maybe you can have it over here. And maybe in some circumstances, maybe they can't have it there at all because it isn't, it is an obstruction. I don't want to prevent anybody from operating their business, but I also don't want to prevent access. I don't want to preclude access by the public. So I think that's kind of what I have for now. I think the short-term, long-term thing, I think that's reasonable. Sidewalk sales, um, I think it's reasonable that um we could have them. Uh, I think you're talking about some timeframe, so it's not happening. You know, I mean, we have some places in Oregon City where there's a perpetual garage sale going on. I mean, how much stuff do you have in your home that you're having garage sale every weekend? I think that stuff is coming in from someplace else. So that's, is that really garage sale, or is somebody operating a flea market? So I would like to not see that thing. So I know some of the antique stores, they have some displays. Are we differentiating between a display, or is that considered merchandise? So maybe that's, I I don't have any objection to it because none of them that do it block the sidewalk. But it is something that you're wandering along, you think, oh gee, I might need that antique, whatever it is. So I think that's okay, and I don't see any problem with people continuing to do that. So I guess I would want to know how you're, you know, if we're just all including that as sales because it is actually something you could buy. So that's, that's okay. I, I think that we are trying to be very responsive to the changing retail market and but we also have an obligation to our citizens because it is in a public right of way. So that belongs to all of us, not just that particular business. So we have, we have sort of a two-pronged approach where we want to be responsive, but we also have to be responsible to the other part of the community that might be using the sidewalk for its intended purpose, which is walking.
Okay, Commissioner O'Neal. Well, I think we need to be a bit cautious here, and I realize we discuss these things individually. But think about it, we're talking about the possibility of putting service areas in our parking spaces. And now we're talking about the possibility of uh the use of the sidewalks at the same time as that. And then we're talking also about the possibility of allowing sidewalk sales. So all three could be occurring simultaneously, and what would be the effect of that? So I, I think there's so much work to be done on this. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm saying think it through. Um, I I also struggle with some of the things I saw in this report. How do I differentiate between a sidewalk sale versus a a store or vendor putting out what they call enticements? Enticing them to come, oh, look in my store and see more of this. So what's the breaking point between a sidewalk sale and an enticement, when you could buy the enticement? Um, the fee piece, I struggle with that. I remember the owner coming in and talking about, I I think I looked at the figures, and I think we had maybe five participants, and probably a whole bunch more people taking advantage of our sidewalks that didn't participate with a fee. And I, and I did see, and I hope this is wrong, I hope the fee for a sidewalk sale permit was not the three hundred and thirty-four dollars I saw. Because that would be a a big hurdle for anybody to 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 jump. And I do feel that there's gotta be a, a, you know, I'm worried about accessibility. I think about seasonality. I start, you start talking about long-term uh permits, so what kind of structure are they gonna build? Are we now building gazebo's on our, on our streets? And what about sight impairment uh for traffic? I I don't want to create hazards. And again, I'm just throwing all these things out there because it's too easy to deal with any one program alone and not look at the total effect of all of them. So I think that there should be some small fee, not necessarily even a recurring fee. I think Ms. Yates said that, you know, if you, maybe you pay it the first time, and if you're compliant for that year, you don't have to pay it after that. If you're a multiple offender, you pay an increasing fine and to a point where you can't participate in this program. But as far as, again, I said earlier, I I saw where parking enforcement thought that this would be too much of a burden on them to police this as they are down doing their other work. And I find that amazing. I mean, you have to walk by it and ignore it when all you'd have to do is educate the personnel. So I think any fees need to be more about education versus anything else. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Um, I agree with most of those comments. I I support the waiver of the fees for the time being, um, because of the situation we're in um with individual stores and restaurants having uh smaller capacity. When we talked about this the last time, I wanted to see a separation between what is making money on the street versus what is just placed there for the um added beauty of the city. So for instance, if a, if a business puts flower pots out front, I I find it unlikely that we should be requesting, I don't think we should be requesting a fee for them to do that. Um, if they put a bench outside um of their property, then, you know, that's kind of similar to that as well. I I I think that is for the good of the public, as long as it's placed in a correct place, and and we have some guidelines for that. But I I don't, I don't want to loop um those kind of decorations or or um infrastructure pieces that businesses are putting out um with sales. So um, and sales, either items or um restaurant space. So I think that needs to be separated. I think that's about it. I mean, there's a lot of other things to talk about, but but I think a lot of the comments have already been ma- made.
Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Yes, um, so I thought the, I interpreted the staff report and the documents that the sidewalk fees were the three hundred and, the special event permit, right? Which was three hundred and something dollars for sidewalk sales.
If it was a special event, yeah. And really, the only way to uh do a sidewalk sale right now is through the special event process. But we could um adjust code to do that differently in the future and actually make it an outright use, and then change it into a different fee. But right now, the only thing current code has would be the special event permit.
Okay, um, okay, um, so that helps. Uh, I think that fee's too high for sidewalk sales. Um, I don't consider sidewalk sales the same as a special event that someone's putting on, you know, a concert in the park. I think those are in the same category, and they're not really the same thing. Um, so I would like to support our businesses and the ability to have sidewalk sales. Um, and therefore, I think uh that fee is way too high. The temporary obstructions for, what was it, sixty-one to three hundred and sixty-five days? My understa- so that permit can be renewed on an annual basis?
That would be the anticipation that they would uh get it one time, and then they would renew it on an annual basis. And then there would, there would be the question of, you know, do they pay whatever the fee is um annually? One sixty-seven annually, or is it, you do it one time, but then you renew it every year at no cost?
So I'm, I'm struggling with the fact that this becomes permanent. If you renew every year, then that structure's there permanently. And and maybe I'm misunderstanding. If I'm obstructing, and I have a permit to obstruct the right of way for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and then I just renew it, and I keep renewing it, then that means it's there all the time. And to me, that's permanent, and that's not temporary. So I'm struggling with that, um.
I think, um, to me, I see it a little bit like um some of those places that you see now where they've got tables and chairs out there, and they may be out there year-round. Um, and I think we're accepting of that as a community. Now, there may be certain places where it doesn't work very well, but in, so we're trying to get between having someone renew every sixty days and rec, and and the reality of this where we've got uh restaurants that maybe have tables and chairs out in the public right of way all the time.
So if a restaurant were to say, I intend to do this as part of my business for the next five years or whatever, could they do the permanent obstruction, your evocable right of way?
So my comment to that would be, the purpose of the permanent obstruction is a, the permanent obstruction is for an item that is secured to the ground. Um, whereas seating is uh not secured, it should be able to be moved at any time. So that's why we call it temporary, because of its attachment or lack thereof.
Okay.
I also think, um
I got you.
Yeah.
That makes sense. And so essentially, if they wanted to do it, they would just have to redo their permit year after year, and that's just part of it. Even if it's there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, we're calling it temporary, really not because of the time as much as it is its attachment to the surface.
Yeah, and a a large, I mean, I've, I've driven the city in December and in June to see what the difference is. And most um businesses actually bring their tables and chairs in for the winter.
Oh, I bet.
There's a few that don't. Um, but I think the benefit of having it renewed every year is that you find out that they're still doing it, maybe they changed owners, but it's the same business, and so you're reeducating them. So if anything, it's an, it's an educational piece.
Right, okay. Um, and then I am in support of waiving the fees for the remainder of the year um as proposed. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, something that Commissioner Lyle Smith
Go ahead.
brought up. So we wouldn't be doing something like renewing a dumpster all the time because we, I'm assuming we don't want dumpsters permanently in the public right of way.
Correct, that um
They're not very movable either, so I mean, they
That's very correct. Uh, uh, from time to time, we have someone that it took them ninety days to do their demo and not sixty. And so they do get a renewal for that, but we make sure that it's not uh never-ending.
Never-ending, okay.
Yeah, I think the most for temporary we've ever done is one renewal.
Okay, so I have a couple of points. Uh, one, I think we have to remember that this is not downtown Portland. And we don't have ten or twelve or fourteen-foot wide sidewalks. And we start, like Trishra Donald said, we start piling on, you know, park, parklets for people to sit down and eat, and then other things. I'd like to see more like a, a once-a-month Saturday kind of afternoon thing where we just let people do a sidewalk sale without having any permits or fees or anything. We say, you know, in downtown on Sat, the first Saturday of the month, or whatever it is, that, you know, the businesses down there could do something like that. I I'm, I'm really scared about trying to put too much stuff in a five-pound bag. And, you know, we're already very close to being, you know, with no parking downtown the way it is. We start putting in places that are absolutely supportive for, you know, this COVID time. But I don't see that working out well long-term in downtown Oregon City. The other thing I I see is that there are some restaurants downtown um that have, you know, multiple tables outside in, on the right of way. And I, and I kind of have a, I don't know, I'm trying to balance that with the fact that we're essentially giving those businesses free square footage um to operate their business. Um, and and, you know, those are businesses that have the space outside to do it, but other businesses might be mid-block and don't have the same kind of space to put three or four or five tables outside. So I want to look at that real carefully about, you know, if it, if a business is running five or six tables outside, I think they need to have a different kind of fee structure than somebody who's only able to have one. Because remember, at the end of the day, these guys are all making money, or like, they're trying to make money. I understand right now that's a difficult thing, but if we're to take this, let's imagine that COVID didn't exist anymore. Um, you know, what do we want to do to make it equitable for everybody?
Mr. Mayor, would that, would your comment include both sides of the, so let's say they have tables up against the, their business wall, and then they also have side, uh, excuse me, tables and chairs on the opposite side? Because that's where I'm having a problem with creating, not being able to create a pathway to get through.
Absolutely, I agree with you. And if you have not noticed, um, I am now recognizing more and more of the issues with uh handicapped access. So uh, I absolutely agree with you. But, you know, there are, there are businesses downtown that have an entire corner. Um, so they're able to have, you know, five or six or seven tables, however they arrange them. And what is the, you know, what is the fairness to that versus somebody, you know, who has a restaurant mid-block? Or they're on one of our streets that the sidewalk's just barely five feet wide? Um, you know, so You know, so really, I mean, except for the exception of this whole COVID thing, I think we need to take really good look at what we're allowing in the sidewalk space, um, because of handicapped access, because of safety and all those other issues and, and and at least as importantly, what's fair to the, to everybody that owns the business now.
I, yeah, I would concur with that. I think, I think you're, you're right on point. Cause if it's based on frontage, some people have an unfair, maybe it's not unfair, but they do have more of an advantage than another. And again, as you said, it's really gets down to safety. And I think maybe you're, you're correct in looking at a different structure. If you've got two tables versus five tables or ten tables. And then sometimes they're all cattywampus, you know, they don't even put them in a area where they're all kind of straight with each other. And I understand patrons move things around and they move their tables around. But I think it's their obligation as well to go out and restraighten that and be thinking about that.
Right, so does anybody else have to comment on this?
No, I, I, I guess I would, yes. Um, I would say I think those were great suggestions. I do like the idea of the sidewalk sale once a, once a month or something. It has a much more of a community feel to it. And I agree, my goal, our, my goal is not for us to, to be like Portland at all. So as much as we can do to embrace our community and have that community feel, I, I like that idea.
Would you feel comfortable with us referring that particular item? Ta- I'd like to talk to Doka about that so they could work on doing something like a promotion, because I think if they band together and do that, it really makes it more community. I, I love, I love that. I love that idea.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
We're gonna come downtown on the, whatever day it is and, you know, we might find some great deals.
Right, I, I think.
Do you think that's a good idea?
Yeah, one of the other things about that is that um, if it's a regular thing, then it starts to draw people from not just the city, but from outside the city. If it's a once a month sidewalk event, you know, that brings more people in than, than just our locals.
Right. And I would, I would say the tiered fee structure, I like that idea as well. I would like the the one sixty-seven or what, I believe that's what it is, to be the top end of that, assuming that businesses with smaller frontage, square footage, or linear feet on the, the frontage would be less than that. That would be my goal.
Well, and remember that uh, businesses are charged by square footage for, you know, the space they have. So maybe we could look at it, well, what is a picnic table and, you know, or a table and six chairs or whatever, how much square footage does that take up? That makes it pretty equitable, because person who only has room for one table pays, you know, whatever the square footage cost is. And a pe- and a business that has the ability to have six tables then pays six times that amount.
Right, okay.
Mr. Mayor, there is one more area that we may have forgotten about. We have a couple of streets downtown that used to be, they're alleys still. And we used to be able to drive through them and now we don't. And some of the businesses have been utilizing that for their business. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well, because I know there's a couple of them that use it for eating. And that is a public right of way as well, even though it's not right out on the sidewalk, is still using, you know, an access point that is still in the public domain, so.
I'd like to interject there that, yes, Mayor?
It should apply equally whether it's a side street, an alley, or main street.
Right, that's what I was kind of getting at.
Yes, and I completely agree. When we implemented the program last year, it was uh, for alleys, because that did occur at one of the businesses last year.
But there's, I know another one down, further down, is eyeing that where we had the old jail, where the old first city jail is, that's also blocked off.
Mr. Wheeler, do you have other questions? Do you guys have direction?
Did you have enough?
I'm good.
I think we're good in here.
All right, so let's move on to the last item.
Katie's bringing up the presentation here.
Mr. Wheeler, are you presenting that one as well?
I am. All right, thank you again for uh, letting me speak about this tonight. Um, it's an item that has been discussed uh, over the past year, year and a half uh, at staff level. We've went from speaking about what do we do about the private utilities to um, what else is impacting the um, things that are in the code that are impacting the ability to get things done and be able to streamline development and be able to reduce conflicts between various standards that occur between uh, planning, building and engineering, and how can we put those all together so that there are no conflicts, or at least fewer conflicts. Uh, so I'm gonna go over a, a broad area of topics to, uh, with this. I want to talk about some of the issues, especially with the right of way. I'm gonna talk a lot about the right of way with the, what changes we're recommending, um, what the code says now, what kind of code we're looking towards. What is the policy? And then I'm gonna go into all those other items um, uh, that deal with other codes. There are some you're not gonna hear tonight. Uh, last, uh, last week, I believe it was, you heard about the infiltration inflow program, the INI program. In that program, there are revisions to chapter thirteen that would occur. We're looking at making this as one big, big package that would come through the entire legislative process. So it would include those, it would include uh, potentially the things we talked about, the sidewalks, it would include the things that we're gonna talk about here, and it would also include uh, geologic hazards, a topic that we've talked about in the past. And uh, will be coming before another work session in the future to uh, let you know what we think we can do to enhance the code that we have for that. But tonight, uh, we're gonna speak mostly about chapters sixteen and seventeen and things of that part of the code. So what is the current code with overhead uh, or underground lines? So lines that are, we're talking about the electric, gas, telephone, fiber optic cable, those sorts of lines. The current code says all utility lines shall be placed underground. What the heck does that mean? We've made that interpretation to mean that all new utility lines must be placed underground. And we've made that interpretation to say that all existing overhead utility lines are directed to be relocated underground. Now, there are exceptions to that rule, such as high voltage lines, which is in chapter thirteen point three four of the code that gives that exception. Um, which is uh, typical throughout all of the metro region. Um, and then we've also looked at various times, it's technically, yes, sir.
What is your definition of a high voltage line?
Uh, thirty-five thousand volts or higher.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And, and that's stated in uh, chapter thirteen thirty-four of the code. We also find exceptions when the uh, moving from overhead to underground is technically infeasible. It's just physically impossible. There's no actual way to do it. It, it cannot be engineered, which is something you never say is engineered, but there are times where it, it's just not possible. And we actually found one of those um, uh, this, in the past six months.
I was gonna ask you if you had an example.
Uh, two oh two Malala was one of those. I don't know if you recall, that was a small parking lot on Malala that uh, they were required to underground their service. But ultimately, there was no physical way to do it that made any sense whatsoever. And so they had to actually go through a type-two process to remove that condition off of their land use.
Unfortunately, the address isn't ringing a bell.
Yeah, um, it's close to uh, the old red building that was demolished at Pearl. It's close to Pearl.
Okay.
So ultimately, um, defining the utilities. So quite often, we talk about public utilities. Well, what does that mean? Well, truly, public utilities are the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer, the water main, the ones that the public entity, the government owns, maintains and operates. Private utility lines are owned by a private entity such as PGE or such as uh, Northwest Natural. Electric, telephone, telecommunication, fiber optic, cable, TV, gas, all of those various things are private utility lines. However, we call them uh, public utilities sometimes because they're for the benefit of the public and they run throughout a public area. So later on, you're gonna hear the word public utility easement. Those are really for the private utilities. So there's kind of a a semantics that can be confusing sometimes. Um, but ultimately, they're owned by a private entity, but for the good of the public.
Can I ask a question here?
Absolutely.
So I have a concern about undergrounding. Um, we ran into this at the police station where we're building a new facility, yet everything around it is, you know, has overhead lines. But we, I don't recall whether we ended up undergrounding some or not all of those utilities to the new police station. But it seems to me there is a situation where somebody's building a new house in an old neighborhood or uh, you know, a new business in a, in a, in a old business neighborhood where everything else is overhead, but we're requiring these people to underground. And how are we gonna deal with that?
Uh, completely agree with you, and that's one reason we've spent the last year, year and a half to try and come up with standards that could exempt some of those. And I'm gonna go over those in a few slides from now.
Thanks, sir.
So where are, where are the utility locations? Where are things located right now? Those public utilities, storm, sanitary and water are in the right of way. They're typically placed under, under the road where the asphalt is. Um, every now and then you'll find them in the parkway, but most of the time, they're under the road. Those private utility lines, quite often, the older gas lines are actually um, underground, they're always underground, but they're usually within the right of way quite often. Other lines typically are overhead on utility poles. So, you know, the electric, uh, fiber optic, uh, telephone, those are usually overhead. When they go underground, so uh, let me give you an example, any new subdivision, whether it's over on Leland with Wheeler Farms in Lindsayan, or whether it's Abernathy Landing up on Holcomb, anytime you have a new subdivision and you're building brand new roads and um, it's a blank slate, those lines always go underground, and we're not suggesting anything different. Here's where they actually go. Uh, you'll see the roadway section in the middle of this diagram, and under the shaded area, you'll see water on the right side, and then the storm drain, and then the sanitary sewer towards the left, and then if we need, we can put the storm in a different location based on topography and other uh, things that may be in the way. You'll notice uh, then from the roadway, as you move outward, you'll see sidewalks on each side. And then past the sidewalks, you'll see an area up at the top of the diagram that says ten foot PUE. And that stands for public utility easement. That's an easement on private property adjacent to the right of way. Um, and that's typically where the gas, electric, telephone and others go. Every now and then, there may not be uh, room for that for some reason, or there may not be the ability to have a ten foot PUE, maybe a five foot. And so in those cases, we find alternative solutions. And I'm gonna go over a little bit of that later as well. Where do we think things are gonna be in the future? Well, the public utility lines, they're gonna remain in the right of way for the foreseeable future. That's been a practice for over a hundred years, and we don't see that changing. Private utility lines, again, the new lines are always gonna go underground when they're brand new. They're also likely gonna go in a public utility easement. Um, that's been the industry standard for quite some time. We've had it on various construction details since as early as two thousand eight, uh, from what I can find. So it's been a practice for a long time. We have changed where those PUES are. We used to require them around the entire property. So if you had a a subdivision of a hundred lots, each lot had a PUE all the way around their entire lot. Now we only require those along the right of way. So it's only in your front yard, basically. This is what we're talking about. We're talking about the older neighborhoods on the left side, that the lines exist, and this is what it looks like. The new neighborhoods, it's nice and clean. Um, you don't have those overhead lines. Um, there's a more attractiveness to it. Although some could say that in the older neighborhoods, there's a um, you know, it's, it also has its own uniqueness to it, and some people like that look. Um, and that's fine. What are the actual issues? So, public utility lines, um, the storm sewer, water main and sewer, they are quite often in conflict with those private utilities. You'll notice that there's been work on High Street. We're putting a water main in there right now. We're gonna hopefully be resurfacing that road next year. Well, when we resurface that, the gas main is actually too shallow right now, and we're gonna have to move it. Well, we're not gonna move it, we're gonna request the gas company move it on, uh, further underground. And so we have to make sure that they don't conflict with the water main that we're putting out there now. And so we've had those conversations. Quite often, older lines that get replaced remain underground abandoned. So the Malala Avenue project, there's a new water main going in. What's happening to the existing water main? It's remaining underground. It's significantly expensive to actually take that out of the ground, so we usually abandon them in place. At some point, we're gonna have so many utilities a hundred years from now, that where is everything gonna go? At some point, we're gonna have to remove something. But right now, that's not the practice, uh, due to cost reasons. Uh, private utility lines, you know, they need to be placed in easement adjacent to the right of way so that they're out of the way. Moving from overhead to underground is beneficial for a few reasons. One, uh, land value, when you don't see that, um, those overhead wires, it tends to raise the value of a house. I don't have any good facts on that. It's just a general um, consideration out there. Also, from a storm standpoint, uh, overhead lines get knocked over by wind storms. It doesn't happen underground, however. We've spoken to PGE and they say, we can see where the problem is when it's overhead. When it's underground, we have to go find it. So there's pros and cons to all, to both situations. I, I think I spoke enough probably about a PUE, but here's a road section, and you'll see on the right, a ten foot PUE. Um, you'll see on the left, a six foot PUE. That's for a constrained road when we do a smaller version of a road because of a compact site. Our standard road, and this is the, the local road section actually, um, has a ten foot PUE on it. And this is a detail that's been in place since about two thousand eight. What other issues do we have? Uh, so on the left side, I've got what some of the issues are, and on the right side, I've got the example of where that issue occurred. So PGE cost increases. It's becoming extremely expensive to move the existing overhead lines underground. On the Lower Ridge subdivision, it's a six lot subdivision at the corner of Cleveland and Hunter in the Park Place neighborhood. They spent several tens of thousands of dollars to move things underground. Now, it looks nice out there, but was that really, you know, efficient, effective for that neighborhood, for that developer? That's to be debated. PGE time issues. It's taking PGE, Portland General Electric, um, number of months to move things now. And you combine that with Comcast and um, all the other companies that are on those lines, the coordination is a bit of a nightmare and takes way too long. We've had this Leland three lot partition down on Leland Road near the uh, city limits of our city that if you drove that, you saw the lines up for a very long time, then you saw them pave and there was a power pole in the middle of the road because we were trying to get development to go. We had barricades for safety and all that. Ultimately, they've removed the pole, and now we're working with them on actually patching the hole that they made. So, you know, it, and that's been going on for over twelve months. It's the, the time issues are just, they're very challenging. Land use proportionality. Uh, we know the Dolan case and what is proportional. We had a project that was a three lot partition at the corner of Prospect and Warner, which is close to Malala Avenue. That area, um, the developer came to us and said, we don't think this is proportional. And so before we issued the land use condition, we actually looked at that and evaluated it and said, yes, we don't think it is either. And so therefore, um, it was not required to move those underground. And then we mentioned earlier, high voltage lines, which is a bit of the issue with the police building. Those uh, ended up being high voltage lines, and there are other things occurring with the police building that is a little complex and probably not for this meeting. But um, that is one example of where the high voltage lines uh, did not need to go underground. Um, the other lines were the question in that case.
Josh, so most of the buildings that we're dealing, or most development, don't have high voltage lines.
Most don't.
So I think you're saying that the police building is one of those exceptions because of the type of facility that it is, so that's kind of a one-off.
Actually, it actually wasn't due to the type of the facility, it was due to the existing lines that existed. It just happens to be where a transmission line comes through, and they happen to be adjacent to it. Uh, most of the high voltage lines are in major roadways, uh, tend to go down Malala, Beaver Creek, uh, places like that.
Lines you see in most neighborhoods are ten thousand volts or below.
Thank you. So the conflicted code uh, that we have right now is that building setbacks, the front setback specifically. And these are just a few examples. There's actually numerous examples. The R six district, uh, it's a minimum five foot setback for a porch. So someone could be as close as five feet. In the R three point five and R two district is some, it's five feet for a building, a minimum. You can't be further, but the minimum is that. In the MUC and MUD, the commercial districts, there's a zero foot minimum setback. In the MUD, there's a twenty foot maximum, which that would be fine, but then MUC, there's a five foot maximum. So to get the ten foot PUE, it clearly is in conflict with a five foot maximum. What do What do you do, especially with the desire to have urban development and things move closer to the road in those type of corridors? We've struggled with that and have tried to look at each one on an individual basis, um, at this time is kind of how we're dealing with that. Just on the other side, I show again the PUE, 10 feet is the big number. Um, private utilities tell us that they need that much room. Um, there are cases where they can use less. Uh, sometimes why they need that much room is because especially PGE, they have big transformers that have to be 10 feet wide and that's why they need 10 feet. Sometimes it's just that amount of, uh, pipes in the ground, conduits require that many, um, uh, requires 10 feet of room. Where are we talking about these problems? So, um, I realize you cannot see the details of the map on the right, um, but this is a picture of the city that we put together that shows, um, the zoning districts where those maximum setbacks are less than 10 feet. Um, you'll see a lot of Malala downtown. Um, all the colored up there, the orange, the red, the purple, the blue are all districts that would be in conflict with the 10-foot PUE. I've blown that up on the left side, um, just to let you see it a little more clearly. They happen to be in corridors. Every now and then you'll see an outlier out there, um, like the MUC one, they're at AV Davis and Lynn, um, but for the most part, um, they typically happen in corridors. Um, what are the current, um, existing situations? Um, on the right side again, I'm showing a bunch of green and red and yellow. Uh, what do those colors actually mean? Green means that the existing buildings that exist today are 10 feet or further from the existing right of way line, based on an aerial map. Uh, the yellow means that it's five feet approximately from the right of way line. The red means that it's zero feet. Uh, the example on the left, I'm showing, uh, that same intersection of Warner Milney and Malala. You'll see a lot of greens, there's a lot that actually currently exist, uh, away, but you see some yellow in there as well as a smattering of red, um, where even if we wanted to redevelop and try and be 10 feet away, uh, it just wouldn't work. Or if we wanted to develop the property next to it, we'd never be able to get lines next to existing buildings because they're already up against the right of way. Um, downtown is a significant area of that as well. Um, you can kind of see a lot of red in the downtown area on the map on the right. So again, why should changes be made? Existing practice of PUEs versus city code being in conflict? Also reducing hardship to small projects, um, that the mayor asked about earlier. And then, as I said, streamlining that, uh, coordination between planning, engineering and building. Um, really reducing uncertainty for staff because then staff go, what do we do? Uh, so what are the proposed changes? So we're looking, uh, I think the right side is probably where to talk about that. We're looking at putting exceptions in the code for the undergrounding of existing overhead lines. We're looking at, uh, criteria of less than one acre or less than 200 feet of frontage or five subdivision lots or less. Uh, we actually took all of the projects, um, that were currently occurring in the past two years. We did this about six, nine months ago. We looked at the last two years of projects and said, which ones just didn't make sense to us and which ones did? Then we started looking at criteria and go, how does that match up? That's how we came up with these numbers. Um, and we found that across the board, it started making a lot of sense that the large projects didn't fit into this and they have the ability, they're proportional, it makes sense to clean up the right of way. These small ones, just as the mayor said about neighborhoods like McLaughlin or others that are older, it just didn't make sense. Um, because ultimately what was happening was you'd have a two lot minor partition that would be required to do it, but all the other lots are already developed and those lines, it's going to be going up, going down, going up, going down, a roller coaster of lines, which just didn't make sense. Um, however, we did kind of put an exception to the exception, uh, in our policy of if a property in the same block has had to relocate their lines within the past 10 years, then this one should have to too, based on kind of an equity thing that, that was our practice back then and we're not going to ignore that, but, um, so we're going to have you do it in this case. Um, those are proposals from us. So that's everything to deal with overhead utilities and undergrounding existing lines. The other things that we're looking to do in the city code, um, revisions are, we're looking to define capital improvement projects not subject to land use. Um, we'd like to clarify alley ownership. Um, we'd like to-
Hold it.
Yes, sir.
Back up. What do you mean by defining capital improvement projects as not subject to land use?
I am going to talk about that in the next slide.
Go ahead.
Uh, alley ownership, we're looking at, uh, changing driveway adjustments from a type two to a type one. I'll explain why. Um, the definition of development and structures as well as small cells, uh, some clarification on that, and I'll go through each one of these. Uh, capital improvement projects. A capital improvement project we define and are suggesting that we define it better in our code as a project within the right of way or a public utility easement. So typically that's a road project, a sidewalk project, um, which quite often will move that, uh, those utilities into the easement. Um, we are not talking about projects on private property. So for example, the police building would be considered a capital project. We're not talking about projects on private property. Um, that's considered development, uh, that's considered, um, even though owned by the public, the property is, it's done by a development style. So everything that's on not the right of way still stays within the land use realm. We're recommending that everything within the right of way, um, should be exempt from land use. However, we have exceptions to that because the natural resource overlay district, the geologic hazards overlay district, the floodplain district, as well as the William McGreenway overlay district, um, we feel should be exempted from that because there are situations where those, um, need to apply and ensure that we don't impact any of those overlay districts.
Oh, you're missing an overlay district.
Yeah, possibly, yeah. Is that historic?
Yes, because when the city was going to do a project on High Street that affected the curb extensions and those sort of things, those, those types of projects can affect the historic district, whether it's a conservation district or a national registered district. And I think they should be subject to land use. We did our Seventh Street corridor project, it went through the land use process, and I think the initial concept was fantastic, but after, um, the public works department worked with the public, it became a even fa- more fantastic project, was even better. We'd, they had suggested areas where curb extensions could be and where extensions shouldn't be because of the way the road right of way went. So I think we need to, um, uh, add that.
And that, that's something we can absolutely consider, yes. Um, this is the last slide on capital improvement projects. Did I answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, alleys and driveways, um, alleys are a pain to maintain. That's something that John, I'm sure can attest to. Um, it's something that we don't really want to be in the ownership realm of, and so we're suggesting that we clarify and make alleys available and they're required in certain concept areas. Um, but that they became, they become, uh, maintained by a homeowner association, um, with a covenant on that that still allows the city to do it if they don't, um, and then charge them back. Um, but we're looking to have an easement on there, uh, for that reason.
But you're only talking about new development?
Uh, we're only talking about new development. Existing alleys that we already maintain, we continue to maintain, um, unless John has other ideas that I'm not aware of.
[laughing]
Well-
Yes, sir.
Hang on. So I have a real concern there because, you know, homeowners associations tend to disappear over time. Um, uh, the, the one that, that really comes to mind is the Barkley Hills subdivision that had a homeowners association when it was built and they were supposed to build a park and they were supposed to do all this stuff. And then, you know, it slowly just slipped away to nothingness and now the city is responsible for those things. And my concern is in these, some of these, and you know, I don't like the idea of alleyways anyway in new development, um, but more importantly, what happens in 20 or 25 years when there really isn't anybody you can go back on to maintain those alleys, then we, then it comes back to us again.
Uh, very valid point. Thank you very much, and we will take that under consideration as we move forward. Uh, driveways, um, currently, if someone wants to have a wider driveway or two driveways, something that's not per code, um, they have to go through a type two process. And we have found that every time we go through a type two process, it's just a cumbersome process that always ends in yes. And so we've talked with planning and said, why don't we make this a type one process? Because as staff, we can make that determination and, um, so it's something we felt that we should change to make it simpler for those that it makes sense for.
Why would somebody want two driveways adjacent to each other?
Uh, we normally don't allow those, uh, but there are, there's actually one I'm dealing with right now that has a unique situation.
Well, I don't have any issue with unique situations, but having two driveways seems to cause-
Yeah, we-
-street right of way issues.
We rarely, we rarely allow them.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it usually-
So-
That, I'm sorry, the, the type one usually is for the width of the driveway. Excuse me, Mayor.
So my question, my question is, um, if, if staff were to deny that, is that still appealable? Somebody else?
Circuit court.
It would be appealable, but not to the, uh, city commission or to the land use board of appeals. It would be appealable to circuit court and that rarely, 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 rarely happens.
Sometimes you do have to-
No, my, my question is, if, if they don't like the decision of staff, is there someplace they can go before they go to that step?
No. So what, what we're-
We couldn't make that appea- we couldn't make that type one appealable to the, at least to the city manager?
No. Um, the idea with the type one review is that you're going to have clear and objective standards, so there won't be any discretion. If you want this-
All right, copy that back.
You want discretion or you don't want discretion?
Less discretion is always better.
I want clear and objective standards.
Well, so if you, if it's clear and objective and staff makes that decision on a type, as a type one review, there won't be any notice and there won't be any appeal right because it's a clear and objective standard that staff applies. So let's say staff-
I understand.
Okay.
So what about this one though, that you're, it's an exception, asking for two driveways? I mean, that's, are there clear and objective standards for that or are you making a discretionary decision?
Uh, there are clear and objective standards for that and currently we are not supporting what is being requested.
So we do say no.
Yes, there are ways around that if he wants to go through a certain process. Yeah.
I, I will agree with the mayor. I think the alleys and the ownership needs to circle back on that one.
Okay, thank you.
We could just eliminate him from our design standards.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, no, no.
Hey, hey, hello? So, we're assuming we must maintain one person at a time speaking so that people out here can hear, because I couldn't hear any of that.
Move on.
It was a just say no comment.
All right, uh, the presentation is almost over, so the other work in the right of way, uh, that, um, we need to make some clarifications on in code, um, and just want to make sure that there's no issues from what you hear here. We'd like to change the definition of structure to exempt utility poles, um, because currently they're actually part of the definition of structure. Um, and so if they ever need to be placed on private property as a service pole or other things like that, um, we need to exempt that out so it doesn't need to go through a arduous procedure. And then small cells, um, in, uh, chapter 17.80, uh, we're looking to propose an exemption from land use regulations for that because they are in the right of way.
What's a small cell?
A small cell is a, uh, a cellular, um, not, not a device, a, a, uh, how would you explain them?
They're like a repeater.
A cellular transceiver that typically only reaches out to about a block and a half or two blocks.
Yeah, thank you. I, I hear Dante talk about it all the time, but I'm definitely not good at talking about it for sure.
So do we have a lot of standards on those already?
Yeah, we just-
That we've put into place?
We adopted code and what we're trying to, for small cell, so-
Right.
We'd like to utilize that code, but what we're finding is we have that code and, and there's a land use code that's more dir- more directed at cell towers. And so we're trying, we'd like to be able to apply the small cell code that we adopted, what, a year ago, a year and a half ago, and not necessarily apply the, and pu- force that applicant through the land use process for a cell tower, for instance.
But they would still have to follow the codes and requirements that we went through last year.
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and we actually do have a-
The known-
Yes, sir.
The known claim to your, that you're going to be used to hearing is 5G, it's not small cell. So when you hear 5G, think small cell.
Oh, I had a question about 5G.
Thank you. And, um, but ultimately we are, uh, we have not put our first small cell in the city yet. Uh, we've had some people request it now, and so this is becoming very, um, up to the top of our priorities right now. And so, um, we're deciding whether we should package this with, with this big group of code revisions or whether we need to do it separate due to a timing issue. Um, who have we talked to so far? We've talked to the development stakeholders group. They're actually the ones that, um, actually asked us to talk about the, uh, overhead utility, uh, concern. Citizen involvement committee, we've actually, uh, talked to and presented and they, um, supported the un- underground of overhead issues and the exemptions. And then we've talked to Portland General Electric, PGE to understand, you know, why they need, what they need and are there exemptions, are there, uh, differences where we can reduce it or all those questions. Uh, what are the next steps? Um, would just like to hear tonight, do you like what you've heard? Um, you know, uh, any comments we'll take back and then, um, if you like what you've heard, uh, staff will continue with the legislative process and, um, we'll give you specific code changes through that process in the future. Um, so ultimately I've got two items of discussion. Um, so I'll start on the first slide, proposed policy on underground existing overhead utilities. Do you like where we're headed? Um, or do you have something else you'd like us to consider? And then number two, uh, the codification of the public utility easements to ensure that it's truly defined, um, instead of abstract as it is right now in the code. Um, should we continue with that? So if I could ask for some feedback for those before I go to my final slide.
Mr. Smith, do you have any?
Um, no, I support this.
Commissioner Laugh, Smith?
Uh, I don't have anything either. I'd, it, it looks pretty good to me too.
Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, yes, if you add in the suggestion that I made with regard to the overlay districts, uh, I think that's appropriate. With regard to number two, I think you did forget one benefit of having underground is that I, where I live, we have had some of our lines taken out by squirrels because they like whatever the flavor of it is. And next thing you know, you don't have this, you know, your electricity went off because somebody bit through the thing. We've had our phone go out. So, you know, in a lot of cases, I would love to have some of those big wires undergrounded because we somehow or another, this has been squirrel city for this year, where they're everywhere. And I see them running across the big lines in front of my house and, uh, I just think, please don't eat, you know, they need to make it not tasty. Uh, and I'm serious, it has happened. So the one thing I would, you're talking about exempting some of the things, um, in the second, the number two, uh, what about if these things occur in overlay districts? I'm talking about all of them.
And so you're, you're asking the undergrounding of existing overhead lines in a-
Well, replacement of whatever it is and they happen to be in an N-Rod or a Geotech or historic district or-
So those codes would still apply.
Why, okay.
1749, 1744, they still apply to, um, any type of pole, overhead lines, underh- underground lines, all those things. And that's already written in the code.
Okay. Then my other question is, is that I recently had, um, a, an interesting and, uh, very thought provoking encounter with a constituent who has some concerns about 5G and I'm sure you've heard that.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen some stuff that's going on in Europe and it absolutely scared the bejesus out of me, what people were, the people who didn't like it were doing. Um, I don't know, because I'm not really sure what they look like. Uh, I know I've been in some other communities and I saw something on a pole that looked like some giant tube. I mean, it was a huge tube. I mean, it was a huge tube, I don't know what that was, if that was five, I don't know what that was, but it was, I thought, I, I drove along, I thought, what is that? And why is that here? And it was, again, it's in the eye of the beholder, but it was extremely obtrusive and unattractive. And I thought, oh, do we, I hope we don't get those in our city, 'cause they didn't seem to mesh very well with what we're trying to propose. So I don't know what those were, and if I see one again, I'll take a picture of them.
Um, I think the rest of the commission-
We actually addressed that in the, in the code that we did, uh, a year, year and a half ago, Commissioner. Um, so there are things that can be done with 5G stuff and things that can't. Maybe, uh, Mr. Lewis could address that a little more.
I was just gonna say that, that this commission's fairly familiar with those, I'd be happy to go through them with you.
Oh, I'd love-
You, me, and Dante, go through that.
Sure, I'd love to.
I would also say that the technology's getting better, so we're seeing, um, proposals that are much less-
Obtrusive.
You know, obtrusive.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that, we can set some time up offline.
We do have application for them right now in, in, which includes their, their plans, so you could actually see one that's being proposed.
Well, this, this constituent was extremely concerned about their placement, and I will follow up with you on that.
Does that conclude your comments, Commissioner McGriff?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell? No volume, Frank? There we go.
Still can't hear ya.
Hold your spacebar down.
That doesn't work for me.
You mean it?
There you go.
Yeah.
Hope he's still on mute.
Am I unmuted or not?
Un.
You're good now. So I hope on the 5G piece, there's, uh, some coordination between these multiple providers, so we don't get a city that's super saturated with each provider putting up their individual sites or towers. Other than that, this is a lot of information tonight, and I'd like to think it over myself, so I probably don't give direction. And the questions I always ask myself are who benefits and who pays? So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna mull over what was a wealth of information, thanks. And I'm okay with us moving forward with, you know, incorporating suggestions from all the other commissioners, I think all of those were decent ideas, and, uh, you know, we can just see what you guys come up with as we move on. Uh, does that conclude your presentation?
I did have one more slide.
Can I ask one question before you go on?
Absolutely.
So do these changes resolve the setback issues with all the colored maps that you gave us?
They resolve the conflicts between practice of providing POEs and building setback issues. Yes, so the conflicts that currently exist with practice, procedure, and code are resolved by this.
Okay.
To the extent feasible. There'd still be some unique situations that'll come up. Um, uh, the other, uh, slide I had here was, um, the other things that we're, uh, making sure that we were going in the right direction. Uh, we just heard about small cells, um, driveway modifications, that we make that a type one instead of a type two, and, um, taking transportation capital improvement projects or utility right-of-way improvement projects out of land use if that was a, if we were going in the right direction there. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna lean towards Commissioner McGriff here. I'm not, uh, I'm not interested in taking small cells out of the land use, uh, process right now. I think we're just seeing the, the patient begin. I wanna see how that plays out, and maybe in a year or two, when we know we've got everything lined up, we could do that. But for right now, I'm, I'm uncomfortable taking that out of the land use process.
I would agree, I've received enough feedback via email of concerned citizens on this topic. I think it's new, it's new for our community, um, it makes, it does make me a little nervous, and I think it makes other people nervous, so, um, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
The only, uh, thing that I wanna add about small cells, 'cause we're dealing with this one right now, is that they're, the, um, federal government has established time limits to, uh, upon which agencies have to, uh, approve these things. And, uh, we have one in the queue right now that the applicant has asked us to s- to start the stop clock, uh, that they, or, or, they, they have a date in mind where the stop clock started, and, uh, they've got an application in place. What we didn't direct them to was the, um, was the, the, um, land use code that applies. There was a difference of understanding about that particular, you know, requirement. And so we've got a situation now where we've held, uh, an application based on, uh, and reviewed it through the engineering department, but we haven't gone through the land use process. And there's also the question of fees, which is also a federal requirement. Um, so we've got the fees that were adopted through the small cell regulation that we, or code that we adopted, and, and our fee structures for those, but it doesn't include the land use fees associated with that. So we've, we were hoping to accelerate the, the small cell, um, discussion through the land use process, and, and they've agreed to kinda hold off for a couple of months, but, um, that land use process could take a while. So I guess based on this direction, if, if we've got consensus on that from the city commission, we'll get back to them and let them know you need to submit for, uh, a land use application, and I know Laura is, you know, she's gonna put it in the queue, and, you know, we'll have to move through that. What I don't know from a legal perspective is whether or not we'll hit a time threshold that, um, the FCC, for instance, would-
What is that?
Would, uh, challenge.
Uh, T-Bales, have any other comments on that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, the question would be, what is their timeframe? Part of what my concern would be is that if this is already in the queue, we can't really, there is no, in my opinion, there is no expectation of changing the goalposts, because if this application is already in and we change the code, they're still gonna be under the old code, they don't get to be under the new code. We can't-
They haven't filed the land use application yet.
Well, no, I mean, any application process that we have, it doesn't, I mean, this code isn't gonna be retroactive if we make these changes. Something's already here, how do we, you know, address their concern? We, we can't make it retro, I mean, I would feel uncomfortable if we were gonna say, oh, well, it's all retroactive to this date because you've got your application in, I, I, I don't know if that's, that's not really-
Right, so typi-
Being fair.
Typically, under the, um, in the code for a small cell, there wouldn't necessarily be a land use process-
Right.
Associated with those, that was the original intent. The, if we apply the, um, chapter seventeen-
Point eight zero.
Zero.
Point eight zero, uh, if we apply that, then that does put them through the land use process, which they haven't submitted on yet.
Right, but that's, that's what's in existence right now. Correct?
It is, it is in existence right now.
Yeah, and, and their application is in existence right now.
Right, but they've, they've, they've met the threshold of applying to the agencies under the, under the public works permit, and so that's the one, that starts the clock, right? And so, yeah, the, I think, under, the FCC doesn't necessarily look at the land use timelines, um, that, that our code has, and so there's just a conflict there. Now, they may be willing to let the city's process play out, in fact, they indicated that they would, but they were, they were under the impression that we were gonna be able to move it through with these code changes, and if, if needed, we might even, and if the commission wanted to have that conversation sooner, we have that conversation sooner. But, um, our goal would be to get through that in a way such that we would exempt those small cells through, um, from the land use code and just review them as was our intent when we adopted the small cell code. But I'm hearing something a little different today, tonight, so-
Yeah, I, I, I would agree.
We can share that with them, and-
Yeah, it's not that I'm un, I'm symp-, it's not that I'm unsympathetic to that concern, but I think, you know, we have a conflict between what a local government is asking for somebody to do, a private party, versus what the federal government is saying you can or can't do, and, you know, I kinda bristle a little bit at overreach by the federal government when you've got a, a local jurisdiction that has some requirements. So I, you know, we wanna play fair, is what, what I'm saying, we wanna play fair in-
We're part of a consortium that-
Right.
Also is opposed to those, uh, federal guidelines, but-
Well, I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm just saying that there's, can be conflicts. So I don't think as an applicant, I would have any expectation that something was gonna happen that might, that might not happen. So I, I'm sympathetic, but yet-
Yeah, good point.
We haven't enacted anything, so I don't think they have an expectation that they're gonna be exempt or not exempt. I think when it happens, it happens.
Commissioner Smith, do you have anything for us?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Nothing further, thanks. Nothing further, thank you. Thank you, does staff have the direction any?
Yes, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Very informative.
All right, let's move on.
Good evening, Laura Turway, Community Development Director for the city. Um, Katie is bringing up a presentation for you regarding pre-application conferences. Earlier this year, um, the commission directed staff to come back with a presentation regarding recording pre-apps, and so, um, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on pre-application conferences and what they are, and the guidance that we provide applicants and how we do that guidance a little bit before we wind back to the original question, which is, um, if they should be recorded in the benefits, um, that that would or would not provide. Um, so pre-application conference is the first step in development review. It's the space between, um, you've maybe called someone and said, like, what are the standards? If I want to build a new apartment complex or something like that? And you've actually paid all the money to submit an application, and the engineered drawings are all perfected and all of that. So it's that space between, and, um, it's early on in the process. Um, at that point, plans are generally pretty flexible. People don't know exactly what the code says or how the city will view things, even though we have mainly clear and objective standards. And, um, so it's just an information gathering space. Um, the purpose of the pre-application conference is to provide certainty to the developer, to answer unknown questions and let them know what they're getting into before they actually apply. Um, one thing that we say is, the more you give us, the more we can tell you. So give us as much details about your proposal, and we can give you as much detail, um, as y- you want. So the purpose is to look at our code and see how the development proposal does or does not meet our code. So we identify which sections are applicable, we do a preliminary review, we don't write a full hundred-page staff report like we do in the end, but we just look through the code and use our experiences and knowledge to identify things. Um, we also identify how the site will be served by infrastructure, how is the water and the sewer being, um, carried to the site? Um, what type of public improvements they need to do? Do they need to widen the street, add sidewalks or streetlights? And with all of these standards, are there any conflicts? Do we have conflicts between our departments? Um, we take the pre-application conference and send it out to a variety of agencies and departments. At the meeting itself, it's typically planning, building, engu- uh, development services. Um, fire department will provide comments sometimes, we have our transportation engineer review. If it's a county road, the county's there, so other people join as needed, but at least everyone has, has the information that the development is being thought about. And then that is also the trigger for us to send it to, um, the state historic preservation office and, um, some tribes as well to let them know that some development may occur in the future. Um, we identify what the fees will be in the development process, we identify what the process is, and oftentimes we'll say, you know, if you do this, then this is the process, but have you thought about this alternative method? And that is a different process, it may be a little bit easier. Um, and then one thing that I really like about our pre-apps is that we have a lot of templates to identify exactly what is needed. Um, we have no interest in wasting applicants' time nor ours on doing lots of review. We want you to be successful on your first submittal, 'cause we don't have time to review it five times either, nor, nor, uh, also, we acknowledge the time is money on the private side. Um, so there's a variance in pre-apps that get submitted. We get a lot of hand-drawn ones, um, and we also get ones that are done by professionals. Uh, again, the more you give us, the more you get out of it. Um, so I wanted to recognize that we are talking about maybe some really nice property owners that wanna do an addition on a historic home, but it's kinda hilly. And so we're talking about kinda technical, um, issues related to historic districts or geologic hazards, or we're talking with actual, uh, engineers and planners and things like that that do this for a living. Uh, we had seventy seven-
Mr. Way, can I interrupt for a second?
Please.
I just, I, I'm, I, I'm not sure whether Frank turns his camera off or he's gone, but I wanna make sure Frank is there.
I'm here and I'm listening.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, we had-
I heard it all.
We had seventy-seven pre-apps last year, you can see that we have quite a few every year. When we have pre-application conferences, generally by the end of the week, we have two a week. Um, but within the week, we send notes, um, of that conference. We included some excerpts of notes in the packet, both ones of complicated projects, so you can see what those responses look like, and then of other easier ones, so you could see what those responses look like. Um, so that is the method that we follow up with written information. We use these pre-application notes later on when we do the development review. So when the application finally rolls around and comes in, likely it's changed a little bit. About half, we estimate about half the pre-apps actually come in for, of the number that you saw, about half of that come in for an actual development application. Some are multiple pre-apps for the same development, um, and some just don't end up shaking out. So with these written notes, we have a public, we have a disclosure on them. We've always had disclosures on the planning side of the notes. We'll do two separate notes from development services and planning, and we package them together. We added new disclosures, um, this past year to our development services notes. We have language in the municipal code in seventeen fifty fifty specifically C that talks about how these meetings are non-binding, and we do the best we can, um, to provide good quality information. I could tell you, as staff for a long time, there, it, you want to get it right because you're also referring to it later and you're using it later, and it's nothing but trouble if you provide bad information. And so, uh, generally, we do. There is a gap sometimes where if someone has an application and then they change it after the pre-app, and then they come in for development, sometimes there is a little bit of a gray area where we gave them notes on a certain proposal, and this new proposal looks slightly different. Um, but we, our goal is to work together, again, to make sure that, um, they have the code, so they know what the standards are. There is no magic tricks, um, it's clearly out there for them when they submit an application. Um, so circling back to the original question of should they be recorded? Uh, we did a comparison of other cities and if they record it. Um, and as a result, it, it looks like Wilsonville does, but they don't do notes, and nobody else that we could identify either records audio or video of pre-apps. I could tell you from our experience, I like the written pre-app notes because you don't have to go back into a meeting and try and, like, find in the meeting who said what. Um, it's a little bit easier to refer to. Um, so with that, we're looping back around to the original question of if the commission wishes staff to record these meetings or not.
So, uh, Mr. Turway, are you done with your presentation?
I am, sir, thank you.
So I'm gonna jump in here, 'cause this was me. Um, and Commissioner O'Donnell and I have had at least a couple of different situations where there have been disagreements between what one person said, that city staff said, or what city staff said, that the applicant said. And it seems to me that it's a pretty cheap, easy, and efficient way to, you know, uh, uh, mediate those kinds of questions when they come up. Uh, the pre-app can be recorded on one of the little digital devices, downloaded into the file, and you could still do your notes, I'm not saying you shouldn't do the notes, but I, you know, it's hard for me when, you know, a, a citizen comes and says, hey, I was trying to do this, city staff told me this, then when I came back, um, they said they didn't say that. And, um, so I just think it's, I, I liken it to a policeman wearing a body camera. Like, if you have a recording, there's no question about what anybody said that'd be.
May I-
Anybody else, Commissioner O'Donnell, you got any?
I have, just have a question. A, a very-
Go ahead.
A very simple one. What I'm not clear about is what is it the, what is the problem that we are trying to solve, or is there a problem?
There, there is a problem, because like I said, I've had several situations over, over my five and a half years as mayor where, um, you know, somebody has come in and they said the city was gonna let them do one thing, and then when they came back, the city said, no, you have to do something else.
I understand, I was asking Laura what that was.
There were real questions about who said what, and whether, you know, it was the city staffer who changed their opinion, or whether it was the applicant, or, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to poke blame at anybody, I'm saying there's a, a simple, uh, very easy way to resolve that next to have an audio recording of the pre-app.
Um-
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Could I have Mr. Turway answer my question, please?
Certainly, go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you. I do not believe that there is a problem- I do not believe that there is a problem that an audio recording can solve. We have written notes. It would be the same in writing if it was in audio. That being said, if the commission wants us to audio record them, we can. We have over time made our code more clear and objective, so there is less discretion. So hopefully this has been reduced over time. This isn't, certainly not a frequent thing that happens. But we could do that if you want us to, we could record. But it's one more record or thing we'd have to administer.
The difference between notes and an audio recording is notes are influenced by the person that's taking them. And, you know, depending on what that person heard versus what might have actually been said, when you have a recording, you know exactly what everybody said.
Oh, just to clarify-
Commissioner O'Donnell, go ahead, Mr. Wake.
The planner writes the notes, who does the analysis? And then the engineer writes their notes, who does the analysis? And then our transportation engineer writes their own notes. So there's no interpretation of what is said or not. It's their analysis coming out of that one person.
Right, but that includes the people on the other side of the table. So you're interpreting what, what the applicant said, putting it into the notes. Because I've had at least two situations where the applicant has said, I took my own notes and my notes don't agree with your notes.
The one thing I do want to say is that our notes are not verbatim. They're not minutes. They're just an analysis of how they do or don't comply with the approval criteria.
I understand. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, unfortunately, I've had occasion to sit in on two of those meetings by complainants. And the question why there's so much reluctance to do this, I believe, would be quite easy to accomplish. And for the same reasons, I mean, there's perception and what was said versus what was heard. And I understand we've got this disclosure statement that says it's informational only. But I mean, I think if recording isn't too much of a challenge, I mean, why do you think police interviews are recorded versus just written notes? I mean, for the very reason that they can be examined and examined objectively. So I'd like to give it a try for a while and see. It's not, it's not a headhunting exercise, it's a verification exercise. I know we go back to the same thing about these pre- apps are informational and advisory only. And I know the quality of the answers you get is based on the quality of information you provide. But I don't see a problem in, in doing a trial program and seeing if we, I mean, I think we've had two complaints in the last year. I'd really, and I looked at both notes and I, I really would have loved to have been able to sit there and listen to an audio exchange. So that's how I feel about it.
Commissioner Lowesmith?
Thank you. So words that you said earlier when you started your presentation were interesting. You said the goal was to provide certainty to the developer. And, and so I thought that was an interesting statement, given all of the disclaimers at the end that, you know, so I, I'm a little puzzled by that. It's like we're either providing certainty to the developer or we're just providing truly just information that they can take or leave. So I don't know if you can address that.
Yeah, that's a good question. As a developer, you want to know how your proposal will be accepted or not by the city. And so having the written feedback does provide the certainty. I think there's two questions. One is how well are we document, how well of a review are we doing and how well are we documenting it? And then the other thing is are we changing our mind? So I'm sort of piecing those separate out. As far as, I know our review is thorough and I know our documentation is good. I mean, you can see examples of it anytime. I think the question you guys are getting, or the commission is talking about is if someone's changing their mind or direction. Ultimately, anything that has a pre-app goes through a public process of review, whether it's a city-level decision with public notice or a planning commission decision. And there's never 100% certainty in development until you get a decision.
Right. So it seems that, I mean, developers can come back multiple times and have multiple pre-app conferences, correct?
Yes, big development normally does. Like for example, they'll do a site plan without the building designs because they don't want to invest the money in design until they know.
Then they get more and they come back and you learn more and you kind of repeat this process.
Normally people do one development, one pre-app per development, but larger ones will tend to see two.
Are there fees for these pre-application conferences?
There are fees, yes.
So every time they come back, they pay a fee?
Yes, if you come back for your second one, there's a, a larger fee for bigger development and a smaller fee for smaller development. If you, on your multiple develop, if you've done it before, then you get the small fee.
Okay. So I think, and the reason I'm asking about the fees is because I think it's important for developers to have skin in the game as far as versus continuing to use your time, continuing to come back and just tweak these plans and review and take staff time. I mean, so I, I'm, you know, I, I think it would help the process. So I'm glad that there are fees for that, you know, to make it worthwhile. Hopefully they're looking at it as a valuable meeting as much as you are for the work that you're having to put into it. One of the most recent problematic ones that I think the commission saw, there was, there were email exchanges between the developer and our staff. And those emails were, ended up, and the reason we saw them, because they ended up being provided in the public record. And it was all over this, what did we tell the, what did we tell the developer? But this was an email. And so because I know that happened, I'm trying to figure out, I, the audio doesn't solve that issue. And it still seemed like it was a he said, she said, or we were still providing input on this pre-app via email. And so in that sense, I don't think audio would solve that issue, right? And this is the most recent problematic case that, that I'm aware of. And one of the reasons I think we're having this conversation tonight. So do you see any type of resolution to that? Or is there a way that we could try to work on this issue? I mean, I guess email documents the conversation, but even reading those emails back and forth and the whole email chain and the back and forth and different staff and you have to figure out who's writing who and all, it's, you know, I'm not sure that that's the best record either. So I'm just, I just know that that was one of the problems. Or it seemed like the emails were being used as part of their record of what was being said to them. And so I'm trying to figure out where that fits into the pre-app, that notes and documentation process.
John can talk about it a little bit further, but I think that was after the pre-app, but-
Was that the case? Was it after the pre-app?
It was after the pre-app. And I think email, email is a, is a good tool. And it's timestamped, it's date stamped, you know, all those kind of things. And it's a little easier to articulate what you mean because you've got time to write that email and, which is true for the notes as well. There's definitely times when it would be nice to have an audio recording of a meeting by far. Because there's the inflection of the voice, there's the certainty of the answer. All those things can come out of that. The, the thing that I have concern about is the, again, we're getting a variety of, of information presented to us before the pre-app meeting. And depending on the skill or experience of the applicant, you know, they may save all their questions for right at the meeting, right? And they may dig deeper and deeper, deeper. I, I, I think that you'll see, I mean, one of the nice things about the pre-app, in fact, we used to do kind of free apps where our, our economic development manager would kind of try and, you know, ask the right questions, help to facilitate that, especially for commercial development. The, I, the, I think the idea of the pre-app is to try to help the applicant with ideas, suggestions, maybe provide answers with a bit of a question associated with them that, hey, here's what I think, but I'm not sure. And yeah, that, that would probably come out as well in a recorded meeting. But I think as a staff person, you know, being recorded, it is different than a police, you know, investigation of a crime. We're talking about something that we would like to have an open-ended meeting on and talk to the applicant, you know, with, with, you know, the limited information that we have and try and deal with that. A lot of it is black and white, right? We've got codes, we're giving you the codes, here you got to meet this code. But the other thing is to try to be helpful with that. And I think the recording and the idea of recording and, and holding the staff person who's kind of being recorded to a, a high standard, higher than what's kind of an industry standard, means that those pre-application meetings or just the, the context in which we're there to help will turn to very much kind of black and white and anything else. We're probably not going to be as helpful because we wouldn't be sure. It would be more like, I can't answer that, you'll have to read the code, you know, versus, oh, well, I can tell you what's happened in these three experiences. And I just, I, you know, that's where I'm concerned is putting staff in a tough spot sometimes. And I get that this is a paid-for product. And I, I would say since I took over the position, I've seen, I've seen our product that we provide to the applicant go from a one-page summary to, I think I've seen the engineering side of things of fifteen, sixteen pages of, you know, kind of notes or references for folks to refer to. And, and, you know, I, I, I think we've come a long ways with checklists and all those kind of helpful hints for the development team. And I, you know, I think the last example of where this was wrong, it's not the right example to use for a variety of reasons and I'm not, I won't go deep into that. But I, I just think that it, it will change the dynamics of the meeting and, and I think that will change to become less helpful for the applicant. As much as we will continue to try to do what we, you know, can do, I just worry about that a little bit. And everybody feels a little differently when recorded. It's no different than, you know, being in front of you. We can have probably a good face-to-face conversation, but then we have a conversation here where it's recorded and we're in front of an audience, you know, different things come out of people's, you know, they convey a different message. So that's all. I mean, there's definitely been times when, man, it'd be nice to pull up the recording of that and, you know, show it, but-
Commissioner Smith, do you have anything for us?
Um, I'm hearing the pros and the cons of it. I, I, I mean, my, my concern is that we fix what is perceived as a problem. And how we do that, I'm not really, you know, I'm open to any other ideas. I know that this is an, this has been an issue. I've heard this from people that have gone to planning here, getting answers and then coming back and it's not the same answer when they return. I had my own personal experience with that in terms of just plain signage. Went through the whole signage process, came back and they said, why did you do all this? You don't need to do any of this. And, and it was a week-long work of work that I put in to put in, for, for signs. So I know that, you know, and I, I think if there's a way that we can, you know, try to minimize those kind of conflicts. And whether recording is the right way, I don't know. Because I definitely hear and have concerns about that piece of it too. So I think, you know, I just want some assurance that we're just doing better and figuring out that there's not a discrepancy when people are coming back and forth. And, and I guess I'm open for staff to come back and, you know, give us some solutions to that. It doesn't necessarily, to me, need to be an audio recording. That's one possibility, but-
Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to start my comments out with that I think I am probably the only person sitting up here that is uniquely qualified to respond to this question. Because I have done them, I have been in them, I've been on both sides of it. I've done it as a staff person, so I know what the process is. I have been land use chair of my neighborhood association in the past and I've had applicants come to me and say, well, city staff said X. And I know for a fact that the staff did not say that because I also know what the code is. And I know there's no way they could have reasonably said that. I'm not saying the person is lying, I'm saying that they heard what they wanted to hear. I understand that. We all do that as, as, as human beings. But I think we need to look at what is the purpose of the pre-application conference? It is not to give an absolute. The person comes in with a certain amount of information and the staff only has the opportunity to review something based on the information that they are given. They are not mind readers, they do not have any Ouija boards or crystal balls. So they cannot project into a future that an applicant says, well, I've changed my mind, I'm going to do X and the staff told me this. That is not the staff's job. The purpose of a pre-application conference is to give the applicant some context in which their proposal is going to be reviewed. They are looking at it from the standpoint of if you do X, Y might occur. But it's a discussion, it is not an absolute. It is to give them some guidance. But again, let me go back to what it is that the staff is looking at. It is based on something that they are given. If the quality of the information is lacking, that puts staff in an undue, an undue, unfair, unfair position that they are being asked to review something that they don't have a complete information about. If they get more information, the staff can give them more certainty. So it is really a discussion, it is not an absolute, it is not a black and white situation. Based on that, I would agree with what you said, Mr. Lewis, that I think it would put staff in an undue, in a position that would not be appropriate for what the purpose of a pre-application conference is. So again, let's look at what that is. Are we trying to solve a problem that really doesn't exist? People need to be responsible on both sides of this. I think staff has been responsible. I've seen the, the change in the pre-app notes over the time that I have been here, from the time that I was personally writing them to the time that they're writing them now. And they're very detailed. There's way more detail in them that maybe then somebody gets overwhelmed by that detail. But staff is doing the best that they can based on what they're being provided. And I think we cannot lose sight of that. And I don't want this to turn into a he said, she said thing because that's what, that's, that's when it undermines, I think, our credibility. I, I really want to support the staff while they're not making recommendations, but I don't, I don't really support recording it. Again, I go back to the purpose of a pre-app. It is a discussion before an application is submitted. If they come back two or three times, I'm glad you charge for them now because we didn't back in my day and we would spend hours with people. But we wanted to be thorough, we wanted to have a discussion, we wanted to provide assistance to them, to give them a guideline on where they could go with their proposal. And a lot of times staff would come and say, hey, did you think about that? And then it would make their development simpler or smoother. Or they would say, well, wait a minute, what about that? So it's a discussion. It's not a black and white. And I think once you get into that slippery slope of making it very finite, you're going to get black and white, you're going to just get this or that, staff is going to, I, I just, I'm not seeing that we have a problem. And I want you to continue doing what you're doing. It's a job of patience. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'd be the first to admit that Commissioner McGriff, in her previous life as a planner, brings her perspective to it. And I'm also the first to cite the old saying, garbage in, garbage out. But also Commissioner McGriff's words, she talked about, she knows the staff didn't do that. And, and I detect this reluctance to do it. It's, it's not a headhunting exercise, it's not a critique exercise. I mean, personally, if I was a staffer, if the origin of the problem, if everything stems from the pre-app, and I can look back at the pre-app objectively, even if I know as a professional that my plan has never would have done that, I do equate it somewhat to a body camera or an interview room. I, I would actually welcome that proof as a staffer versus having to be a subject of an investigation where I did something that, that was a cause of a downstream problem. So I understand that the pre-app info is informational, we've got the disclaimer. You know, we hear the words, we want to create certainty, but then we do the disclaimer that, well, you know, it's just informational. I still feel like if the origin of the problem is the information exchange in the pre-app, I'd love, even as a staffer, I mean, I, I know when they issued body cameras of police officers, they often thought, well, we're going to catch police officers doing things they shouldn't. Quite honestly, most times that verified the action. So I'd, I'd almost like the independent verification. But I'll abide by whatever the final decision is.
So I'm gonna jump in here and say, you know, I, I understand what Mr. Lewis and Mr. McGriff are talking about, but at the end of the day, the situations that I've been put in by, by constituents who call me and say, I've got a problem, the first thing I say is, let's sit down and show me all your paperwork. And then I'll try to facilitate a meeting between staff and the constituent, see if we can't find, you know, a way to get through whatever the problem is. And I don't claim to be an expert on land use, but in several situations, we've had either the, the applicant has said, well, staff said this, and, you know, I'm certain what, this is what staff said, but then they come back later and say they didn't say it, or it's the exact opposite, and staff says, well, no, that guy never said that. So sometimes it is really a he-said, she-said, and I don't understand the reluctance to having a recording that can be verified and says, you know, did this person say that or not? It's just that simple. And I'm not, again, like Commissioner O'Donnell said, I'm not looking to gotcha anybody. I, I just wanna be able to say, well, okay, I listened to the pre-app and I didn't hear, I don't hear what you were saying to me. Or I listened to the pre-app and, well, maybe there's a question and we need to talk to, you know, a staffer about it. But at the end of the day, I don't see how having a recording really chills anybody in having a free conversation.
So, Mr. Mayor, so in those cases where folks came to you, did they say that the notes were wrong, that, that what they heard was different than what was in the notes, or, or were the notes not ever coming into play?
Actually, the most recent example, this person is a, a pretty successful developer, has done a lot of projects, and his notes actually conflicted with the notes from the city. And he, you know, and I always, when I look at these kinds of things, and anytime a constituent comes to me, I always assume there's at least three or four sides to the story. So I never just take, you know, somebody's word or staff's word or anybody else. I, I like to think that I try to gather enough information to at least have an idea what's going on. And there was a legitimate conflict between the notes staff had and the note this developer gave, and again, there was a legitimate conflict, and there's no way to resolve it without, you know, having known what actually was said at the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, my, my experience has been similar, but it has been the opposite, where I looked at the pre-app notes from the meeting, and it turned out that the notes were very clear and objective. So I've also had the same situation, where I've had a constituent talk to me about something, and I've looked at the pre-app notes and suggested that they go back and talk to the city, and even myself took them and highlighted and said, well, this is what the standard is, this is what you're required to do. And it got resolved. So I, I'm, again, I'm not wanting to create extra, 'cause I can just see this, next thing is that, well, we've got a tape, now we have to transcribe it. That's more work for staff to do. I just think we don't, I don't think that there is a huge problem here. I don't think there's a problem that we're trying, I'm not sure what we're trying to solve.
I think...
Well, I guess you and I have a fundamental disagreement, because I, I have seen a problem. And, you know, while certainly building has gotten better over the last twenty years, there's still quite a bit of work to do there to, you know, keep people from having to come back three and four and five different times. You know, you say, I gotta do A, B, and C, and the guy goes and does A, B, and C, and then they come back and staff says, oh, well, we forgot to tell you you have to do D and E, and then they come back and you gotta do F after that. And I'm not suggesting that this is that situation, but I am suggesting that doesn't, I'm not suggesting we transcribe the notes, I'm suggesting we take an audio file, we put it in the computer file along with everything else, and if there is a situation, then both the staff and the applicant can hear it in their own voices, and then a termination can be...
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Conkle has a question, suggestion, something, I can see, I can see his eyebrows going up and down.
No, I think, I think, I think the hard part is that, you know, th- these applications tend to be pretty fluid, even, even a good application that comes in. You know, and I, I guess I just wanna be careful that, you know, it, the way to address this is that, quite honestly, an applicant can ignore one or all recommendations in a pre-app, and that's why we have a process. If they believe that what they're doing is per the code, an illegal exemption, you know, we, that's why you go through the process, right? And so some of the questions, you know, especially when it's related to SDC reimbursements for projects that may or may not be on a capital improvement list, that's thrown out in a pre-app, to which someone may or may not agree that maybe, that be interpreted as yes, you know, the unfortunate part there is that there is an actual codified process to deal with system development charges, and there's a codified process to go through to request them and be approved. So, you know, I, it, it really, it's up to the commission. I am confident in what our staff does. I am also confident that this is, you know, you're taking, you know, a drawing on a piece of paper and, and trying to begin the process of getting to yes and getting through the approval. But at the end of the day, whatever, you know, that's why we have the land use system that we have, that's why we have the codes that we have in place, is, is, you know, the applicant who had a disagreement with what his staff said, they can submit what they believe meets the code, we deny it, comes to the commission, you make a decision, whatever your decision is, goes to Luba. That's, that's why the process is set up. And I, I understand both sides. Really, it's, it, it's up to the, up to the commission on what their pleasure is on this one.
I, I just think that, I, I'm with Commissioner O'Donnell on this, I, I don't see why we couldn't do a, a one-year pilot and see how it works. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, all the extra effort for anybody. It's a digital recorder, you push play, you push stop, you drop it in, you know, you'll download it into the file. I'd like to see us try it for a year, but I'll, you know, defer to the rest of the commission.
But can we, what, I think Ms. Richter has something to say. I'm concerned about public records and retention requirements.
It's a permanent record as a land use.
But is that where you were going?
Right. I, I think that, that we need to consider whether the he-said, she-said that will come out of this recording and becomes legally relevant. The code requires what the code requires. Whether staff says you, at a pre-app, that you only have to do A, B, and C, and doesn't mention D and E, and you, and a developer has to do D and E, they have to do D and E. It doesn't change if staff missed it or misleads people. That's the whole, the code is the code. And my worry is that you record these, and then you're gonna be in this he-said, she-said, and it doesn't have any legal relevance. The code requires what the code requires, and we don't wanna provide some false assurances that whatever staff tells you in a pre-app is somehow binding or somehow gets you out of a requirement.
But the disclaimers they make already do that. You've got plenty of weasels in there to get staff out of, you know, any, you know, thing they might have said. At the end of the day, this is about, you know, transparency and honesty and, and, you know, making sure that both the applicant and staff are saying what they said. And with a record, you have that. I'm not suggesting we make this some kind of a legal thing, I'm just saying we try it and see if it doesn't resolve some issues for us.
I don't think we have a consensus.
What if there's a request for neighborhoods to be provided notice of pre-apps, so that they can come? And then we need to provide notice even further out?
Some cities do do that.
I, I, I'm...
Well, our, is our code, does our code say that neighborhoods get notified of pre-apps now?
We do not, and the reason why we don't is because the application is not there yet. It's so early in on the process. We do have a requirement that they meet with the neighborhood association before they submit an application, and then after they submit an application, we have requirements to, again, notify the neighborhood association, CIC. But pre-apps, again, are just so early on and things change so much. But we do continue to send the link to where we can find pre-app, or, provide CIC with a list. I think we are providing them with a list of pre-apps that happen and a link to where they can get public records requests if they want.
I, I sense the reluctance by Ms. Richter, and I understand, but when we start throwing things, what if out there, it just confuses the situation. Currently, we don't notify the neighborhoods for pre-apps. I'm, I'm just asking that we do a pilot program and say, you know, let's record the pre-apps for a year and see if it resolves an issue. If there's no issue, then we let it expire. I, you know, I, I just think that sometimes we might try doing something a little different instead of, well, this is what we've always done.
I'm not... Commissioner Alal Smith, where are you?
Um, I'm leaning toward not recording. I'm wondering if we could have an acknowledgement, a signature on the receipt of the notes that kind of acknowledges by the applicant that they are accepting the notes as is documenting, you know, kind of more than just a disclaimer, that with their receipt of it, that they are acknowledging, and if they wanna make changes to it or have discrepancies, you know, that, I don't know, some type of process there that puts a little bit more onus on them to acknowledge the disclaimer, acknowledge where we're at. Excuse me, oh, and, and to read them, you know, yes, you know, please, please read this, yes.
One, two, three!
Yes. We're, we're all laughing, yeah. Yeah, acknowledging that they've at least read them and maybe agree that, that they document the pre-application and understanding of what happened. Maybe that's an option. I don't know.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, I actually had a similar thought, but then I listened to Commissioner Denise McGriff, and it's like, yeah, and one option is, there's a meeting summary published, and both parties sign that they agree that that's accurate to the meeting summary. So do we wanna do that? Is that more work? You know, like, here's the key points, and here's what we decided, and we both agree that's the disposition currently. Do we, is, is that an option, or is that more work than the simple recording? You know, the witness is gonna be perceived by the public that they're watching, it's just, oh, boy, nope, the staff doesn't want, doesn't wanna be monitored. So I'm open to either option. I do think it's important to walk out of the meeting with a firm understanding of what we agreed upon.
Well, and I think that, you know, people throw out buzzwords all the time, but what about openness and transparency? You know, if you have it on your recording, you know exactly what happened. So nobody can argue that Stan said X, Y, and, you know, Stan said something else, because it's right there on the recording, we, everybody can hear it.
So if we were to move forward with this, does staff have a proposal? Is, is the plan that you would come back to us with a proposal on retention policy and, and, you know, an, an opportunity for the applicant to opt out, because there are some folks who may not wanna be recorded, you know? What, what is the next, what are the next steps?
We can come back if you so desire, or it's just clear.
No, 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 what were you thinking the next steps would be?
To start recording if you told us to?
Okay, okay.
Well, I actually like Commissioner Alal Smith's idea that, you know, you bring us back with a proposal that talks about, you know, I hadn't even considered that an applicant might wanna not have it recorded, that ain't even crossed in mind. So, you know, I, I think you should consider all the options and, and bring us some, back in a month and, and with a proposal of, you know, maybe something along the lines of what Commissioner O'Donnell was talking about, or Commissioner, uh, Alal Smith was talking about, or the recording. But I, you know, I wasn't expecting to get to a decision tonight, but I do think there is a problem there that we need to, to, to look at. Commissioner Smith, do you have something?
No, I mean, we, it's a work session, so we can't make a decision anyway. If, if staff comes back with a couple options that deal with the problem we have, we can discuss it and figure out the right solution.
And I do have to say, I haven't really been involved where there's been a lot of conflicts. If there's something that we miss in the pre-app notes, they just say, hey, you missed this, and then we change it and resend it.
Well, to be honest, it hasn't been coming for your department.
Well, I mean, okay.
I didn't, I didn't mean to, I'm just saying, like...
Yeah, I mean...
If we miss something, then we just repost the notes that are fixed, right?
You open the door, I walk in, one person alone.
No, maybe something as simple as just a key point summary, and the key points are always gonna be the money shots, right? What do, what do developers not wanna do because there's big money involved? So I mean, maybe it could be as simple as a meeting summary with the key points that were the big dollar items, and this is what we agreed upon at this point based on the information presented. And you can have a disclaimer statement in there that says, this is subject to change if your, if your program is modified in any way.
I believe it is.
After all, I, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell there. I, I, I would like to see staff come back with a couple of different proposals that, you know, somewhat address what the commission has talked about tonight. I think we could spend another hour talking about, you know, all kinds of different things, but unless somebody else has something, you know, pertinent to the issue, let's let staff bring us back some proposals. Is there a problem with that?
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't have a problem with that, but I also don't want staff to do a lot of extra busy work. Not that I'm considering this busy work, but they have a lot of work to do. And again, we don't have the consensus here about what, there is an, whether there's an issue or not, we're being told that there is. So I, I'm just, I'm not supportive of recording. Just gonna say that.
I totally understand, but we don't get the consensus by not having, you know, enough information to, to see what the other options might be, and that's all I'm asking for, and I think that's what Commissioner O'Donnell's asking for, certainly what Commissioner Alal Smith was talking about, I think Commissioner Smith as well. So let's let staff go back, and I don't consider anything that the commission asks of staff busy work.
So, can I make a comment? Um, it, it's challenging for me because I don't know the numbers we're talking about. If we're talking about one problem a year out of seventy-seven applications, I have a hard time believing that that's a real problem. But at this point, I don't, I don't know that number. I don't know how many we're talking about. If it, if it was three or four over the past three or four years, that's still to be, I'm struggling with that rising to the level of there's a glaring problem that needs, that needs to be fixed. So I don't know how we can categorize that. I don't know if anybody has any information of what rises to the level of this was a problematic pre-application, but that would be helpful to know, because it, it's hard for me to make a decision, in all fairness to Mr., to the mayor, of saying, well, I've heard from constituents, you know, of a couple of issues, and so I'm just trying, I think that's where I'm at, is I'm trying to weigh all of these things. I, I'm like Commissioner Smith, I'm, I'm like, pros sound good, cons, you know, and, and trying to figure it out. Are these, are these notes reviewed by a higher manager before they go out, or is it staff-level always?
Typically, there's a review process as well, and the other thing that I wanted to mention is a couple things. One, you know, we've got, normally, there's the project engineer or project planner that's kind of at that, at that level, and they'd go through that. Usually, that's discussed in group meetings, at least in the engineering group, and Josh, we're overseas at group. There's that level, there's the city engineer level, and then there's, then there's the director level, and beyond that, there's the city manager level. In the case that we're talking about here in terms of the, the example that's kind of been used, is somehow maybe staff did something wrong, you know, that went from a, that meeting that was held in a pre-app, yes, there was a lot of the land use process that went in terms of a staff report, but neither did the city engineer nor myself have, you know, any calls, any outreach from that applicant, even though the staff that were involved early made recommendations that they do that. Instead, I think that the tendency that I think we need to be careful about is when folks circumvent the chain of command, if you will, or the, the, that, and they go to one of you...
An elected official, exactly.
Right, in a, in a way that then, and, and in this case, you know, we really didn't even get an opportunity to kind of deal with that until after it kind of went more to the investigation realm. When in the end of the day, when we did get that opportunity to meet with them, we found some, we, we were able to refer them to the specific code, give them direction on how, because this one blew up over SDCs, their assumption of SDCs versus, you know, what we would normally tell an applicant. And, you know, so we were able to talk through that, and we actually did record that meeting, but I think the, the...
the, the, the dilemma here is a couple of things. One is 99.9% of the differences of opinion that we have with an applicant, if they reach, if they reach, uh, if they exceed a level with staff, staff says, they always know because we've, we shared in our department, hey, well, let's have a meeting with them. Let's sit down with them if this is coming to loggerheads. And in this case, that didn't happen. And I think that that's the right way for that to happen. I really do think that the commission should stay, uh, separate themselves from, uh, development, uh, application, especially if it's in the land use process because it puts you at a, at a, at a disadvantage. And, uh, you know, you may have to recrue, recuse yourself from that decision in the future. Well, it should have come to me or should have come to the city engineer first and, and, and that didn't happen. I guess, what's the-
And so in fact, if you had a recording, when somebody came to me and said, you know, somebody said this or they said that, I could say, well, go back to the recording, sit and listen to the recording. If you still think there's a problem, go back and see whoever it is. Instead of, you know, I just don't understand the reluctance, but let's let staff come back with a couple of options and we can look at it. It's no hurry. Um, let's talk about being like the first meeting in September. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll, I'll just say one more time. I mean, I just heard what Mr. Lewis said. We actually have a recent example that we could verify what he said, that, that things were reviewed by additional levels of our staff. But I'm, I'm sorry to hear that we're focusing on this as if there's an accusation that staff did something wrong. And I, I, part of it is, you know, I'd like to protect our staff against unscrupulous applicants, and I'd like to defend their, their good name. But I also, I don't view it as doing something wrong. I view it as process improvement. And I put a question in my mind, is, it, does the process need improvement? And if, if there is, if it does improve it, is the cost of improving it worth it? So all we're asking for is come back with some suggestions and thoughts and let's see if it has merit or if it's, it's a, not a valid expenditure.
Okay. I think we've beat this horse to death. Does staff understand what we're looking for?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Conkle, we have anything else?
Um, I do not have any commission, um, city manager's report, but we have commission committee reports.
Uh, okay. I, I have nothing because we haven't been meeting on anything. Uh, Commissioner Smith, do you have anything?
No.
Commissioner McGriff?
I gave my reports previous.
Thank you. Commissioner Alial Smith?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Then if there's no objection, we return.
Thank you.